Welcome back, everybody. Good afternoon. We are going to continue where we left off, which was our 11:30 a.m. item, item 6.6, consideration of informational presentation on the Eli Stage Stop and Country Museum. And this is Supervisor Pisca's item.
Yeah, I am. Turn my microphone on. Yes. Well, I appreciate Dr. Parker reaching out and requesting this presentation. The Eli is a really important place for all of us. So I think this is going to be a wonderful presentation. And I don't know if any of my colleagues have been there recently, but a lot's been going on. So thank you, Dr. Parker, for being here. And I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I want to, am I on? Okay. I want to, I want to begin by giving the Historical Society's appreciation to all of you for helping to run this county as best as it can be run. You guys are up here all the time, dealing with all these problems and trying to solve as many as you can. And, and we're all appreciative of that. And I just wanted to pass that along from the Lake County Historical Society. I'm the president of the Historical Society. And I know a lot of you have been out to the Eli Museum. And I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on out there. What is this? Oh, that's not what I wanted. I want to... That? No. Oh, that's exciting. I'll bet if I just use the mouse. Here we go. This, if you haven't been out there, that's where it is. That's Soda Bay Road and Highway 29. Oops. Where am I?
Here comes Sam.
Oh, come on.
You might want to un-click what the mouse clicked.
Yeah?
Is it because the mouse clicked there?
There we go. Here we go. That's what it was. Okay. It's the opposite of what you did. Okay. I'm gonna go forward with the backwards button. I got it.
It's intuitive.
Anyway, yeah, the, the building used to be down there where the little yellow star is, where basically four different wagon roads came together. Why? Why was this building preserved? Well, in 2002, Caltrans was gonna bulldoze it for the new highway work going through there. They're planning on building a highway through there eventually. They did their own historic resource evaluation and said, meh, this is not significant. We're gonna tear it down. The community, however, decided, yeah, this is significant. And the previous owner, Ketten Hoffman, donated $100,000. The current owner, Eckstoffer, donated the five acres. And the county provided the funds for moving and restoring this stage stop. But what you see there is not what the original building looked like, because it has a lot of additions. The original building was built in the 1860s. And as it was used by various people and families, it got expanded and things were added on. In order to move this building, it had to be brought back to what its original 1860 configuration was. And it was put on wheels, hauled across the highway, across the valley. It had to cross two creeks to get up to where it is now. In 2011, the opening ceremony was held, and the Lake County Historical Society stepped up and agreed to operate the museum for the county. The place used to be called the Lost Springs Ranch. Marion James Jamison and their four children moved into the valley, called it home for 14 years. It's likely that he built this house in the 1860s. The whole structure is square nails. And it served as their house, a horse-changing station. If you come out of Lower Lake and you go up the hill towards Kelseyville, by the time six horses get up that hill pulling a stagecoach, they're beat. They're worn out. They need to be replaced. So this place, the Jamison Place, just happened to be at the top of that hill and a good place to change the horses. It was also kind of a public stopover place. And he raised stock and farmed. These are the, this is a map that actually shows the 1800s roads through the area, from Lower Lake to Kelseyville and Lakeport. And the blue line goes down to the, the Hot Springs Resorts. And the Jamison Place is kind of at a strategic spot. So in the 1860s, most of Lake County was cattle ranching. And every year, ranches from all over the lake would herd their cattle to the Jamison Place, where he had large stockpens. And they'd keep the cattle there until the once-a-year cattle drive over Mount St. Helena to Calistoga. Calistoga was the railhead. The cattle would be loaded onto cars there, taken down to Napa, ferried across the bay to San Francisco to the slaughterhouses. Jamison sold his ranch and moved to Kelseyville. He spent, he was elected county supervisor for two terms. He's buried over there in the Kelseyville Cemetery next to his wife. Benjamin Eli received a patent for the 120 acres, including the Lost Springs Ranch and the old Jamison Place. Benjamin Eli had a huge ranch down in, in the valley. And so he really never, he didn't need this land up here. He bought it and had his daughter Sally Ann and her husband, James McClure, to run it. So they came up, Sally Ann ran the stage stop. In fact, most stage stops in Lake County were run by women. The men were out herding the cattle, doing whatever they were doing in the field. The women kept the horses fresh, kept food on the stove, and took care of people that had to stay overnight, waiting for the next stage the next day. As soon as we took over operation of this museum, well, none of the Historical Society members had ever run a museum. So it was a learning curve, a big one. But we started out right off the bat. We needed a, we needed a barn. We had a lot of antique equipment that needed some protection. So we started building a barn immediately. And that became our first big project. Now, every month, we have the Fiddler's Jam in the wintertime in that barn. And we do lectures and displays, that sort of thing. The house itself, we started furnishing it to look like it might have looked back in the 1860s or 70s. We changed the inside decor during the different holidays. And it's a, it's kind of a fun thing to go and visit. Downstairs, it's really, you know, it's a house. It's not really meant for museum displays. It's a house. Upstairs, we use those rooms upstairs for offices and, and Historical Society functions. Outdoors, we have a huge collection of wagons and tractors and farm equipment. And we put them together in a way that tell a story of Lake County's economic development over the years. A lot of projects. This is a project that we had done last year, year before last. Actually, Paul Marchand and the Highland Springs Equestrian Center took on the restoration of this Vic Farren freight wagon. Vic Farren was a blacksmith in Lakeport, built this wagon in 1908, and it hauled freight all over Lake County roads, until it had an accident, which kind of broke the circle iron in front of the, the front part of the wagon. And, and then it was just kind of sat and came, you know, went into disrepair, actually. It was brought back to life and returned to the Eli Museum. And in 2023, we actually ran the wagon in the Pear Festival. We'll be running the wagon again in the Pear Festival at the end of this month. The other project we just finished, the 1890s Kelseyville Jail was being vandalized in a park in Kelseyville. And we agreed to move it and restore it. And it was a lot of volunteer labor. And finally, we completed it on April 21st, restored, it was, I mean, literally, the bottom three feet of it had rotted away. So we brought what we could, placed it on a new foundation, and restored it back to what it looked like originally. And then we had a big ribbon-cutting ceremony. Current and proposed projects. Actually, we finished this barn, another barn. And the second barn, we used to store tractors and wagons. And a part of the barn is a blacksmith shop. And it took us several years and fundraising to get all of the funds necessary to get the blacksmith shop together. But on May 19th, the Chamber of Commerce officially opened the blacksmith shop with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. And so if you're out at the Eli Museum, the first Sunday of every month, you can watch the blacksmith at work. You know, the county has three county-run, county-funded museums. You can't see a blacksmith shop work at any of those. You probably can't get a hayride at any of those either. This museum is all volunteer-run, completely run on donations. And this is our current proposed project. We have a lady that has agreed to donate 18 fully restored historic wagons. This particular one is, well, this one cost $20,000 to restore. It's called an omnibus. It was used to transport wives from the Presidio in San Francisco to downtown for shopping in the 1800s, and then back to the Presidio. Just amazing. 18 completely restored horse-drawn wagons and buggies. But in order for us to get this donation, we have to build a structure to display and protect them. And we've, we started everything. We got a GoFundMe page going. We'd love to use some of the county's TOT funds for this project. But this is just a look at some of those wagons that will be donated to the Historical Society to stay in Lake County as an educational program. I mean, it's just amazing. That's actually an original rural route mail delivery wagon, which looked like this. So we got a five-year build-out plan and all kinds of existing facilities that we already have there. We're working with the County Rockhound Group to develop a mining display. We've already got a mine cart from Sulphur Bank Mine. And we just encourage education, preservation. The museum is open every weekend. We have all kinds of special activities going on, school groups. Before COVID, we were getting 200 school kids from local Lake County schools every year. And they're ready to start up again now that COVID's kind of behind us. And the kids would come out and we'd set up stations so they'd go around and learn different aspects, aspects of Lake County history during their day at the Eli Museum. Even panning for gold and washing the clothes. And the educational programs are a lot of fun. But we have a lot of outside community groups that use the facility. We had victim fundraising for fire victims, women of agriculture, Retired Teachers Association, Boy Scouts, 4-H, Wine Grape Association, Master Gardeners Rotary. It's become a focal point for a lot of community organizations that, that want to do things for the community and need a place to meet, gather, and enjoy their company. You can add a big tractor show there one day. Lots of fun. You can, you can go on a hayride there, first Sunday of every month. Come on by. In fact, I think Bill, Bill, Bill right there with his hand up, he'll drive the tractor. Or you can have a wedding or a prom. My dad's memorial celebration we had there. And TV8 even decided to film a suspense movie there. We have a staff of more than 20 that keep this place running and open for the public. That staff puts in about 3,000 hours a year, which is the equivalent of $120,000 worth of volunteer time to keep this museum open. And in their spare time, they like to have parties. We love to go to the parades. When we have enough volunteers to pull it off, we'll take the stagecoach to the parades or, or the, the new wagon that we got restored. We actually started an excavation across the highway where the original, where the original building was, so that we can give a little more meat on the bones. I mean, you got a building, but you don't know what went on in that building. And the way you learn about what went on in that building is by finding out the stuff that was around the outside of the building that the people left behind. So that's what we're doing, cataloging that kind of stuff. This museum, every year, gets at least 3,000 visitors, representing 13 countries, 34 states, and 142 California cities. It's definitely a gem in Lake County. Every Sunday, 11 to 3. Come on by. We promise we won't shoot you. The Fiddler's Jam, we have a lot of free monthly events. The Fiddler's Jam is open to anybody who wants to come by first Sunday of every month. They play from noon until 2:00. We have a barbecue going on. And family-friendly. It's a blast. Right now, our big thing is getting that building built so we can take that donation Right now, our big thing is getting that building built so we can take that donation of carriages and wagons. And the total cost of the structure will be about $400,000. The Historical Society is going to kick in $130,000 of that, which leaves $270,000 to complete the project. And we've already contacted local Lake County construction, excavation, and plumbing contractors to build this thing so that we can house and display these 1800s carriages and wagons so the public can get a better sense of Lake County history. I mean, I love, I go to museums. When I was in, when I was in school and took history classes, I hated it. You had to memorize all these names and places and spit them back on a test, you know, or whatever, you know? And it was like, how boring. I don't want to do that. But if you go to a museum and you can experience history firsthand, that's a totally different thing than looking at a static display. I mean, if you can walk into a blacksmith shop and hear the clang and smell the smoke from the forge, you know, if you can watch the horses pulling the wagon around, I mean, those are, that's, to me, that's learning about history, you know? So this is just kind of an update, what we're doing. The county maintains the building for us, and we do the rest. And we appreciate all the work the county's done to help keep this going. And the one thing that I'd really be interested in is if we could put a display, maybe do a display up at the Chambers Visitor Center, and maybe even a display here in the hallway that might help us get to that 270,000 we need so we can build that building and keep those wagons here. And it's been years since I've asked for TOT money. Literally, 1982, 1983 is the last time I asked for TOT funds for a Lake County project. I think I'm due. I'm kidding. Anyway, you guys know best. But if you haven't been out there, come on out. We're going to start doing a every-other-month lecture series on Lake County history, and lots of fun. I know most of you have been out there already. Thank you for your support, and thanks for coming out. Thanks for having me today.
Thank you for your presentation, Supervisor Pyska.
Thank you for reaching out to do this presentation. I do like going out there with my family. I love the Holiday Fiddler Jam. That's my favorite of the year. And I didn't know that this was coming with an ask, so I think that will be talking. But I'm just curious if the Historical Society has any plans to expand the history, maybe pre-first contact and incorporating some of the other rich history that we have.
Native American prehistory?
Correct.
No, we don't. We do need, in this county, a Native American cultural museum that presents that aspect of Lake County. Because this is such a, it's just basically a historic spot with historic stuff, we are confining our historical approach here from 1860 to about 1930. And we don't really accept anything past 1930, and we don't really display anything before 1860. But we really desperately need a cultural museum to focus on Lake County's Native American heritage. I mean, we got 20,000 years or more of Native American heritage that you really can't learn about. There's no place to go and learn about. I remember several years ago, there was some discussion that the state was, might build a new state Native American museum, and they were looking at Anderson Marsh and the, and the social services offices over there as a possibility. But then somebody else came along and pushed some buttons, and it went somewhere else. So I don't know. But that's still probably the best place in the county for a Native American cultural museum. And the facility is already there. But, you know, that's out of my hands.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're going to have some more conversation.
Yes, absolutely. We'd love to get it done. Thank you all.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just, I just noticed something. The Confederate soldier. And yeah, no, is that the, are they honoring the Confederate soldier that killed Captain Lyon or General Lyon?
Oh, yeah, probably was, yeah, yeah. That's actually one of our board members who likes to dress up and walk in the parade. So, yeah.
If you don't, do you know who, if you don't know who General Lyon is, he was Captain Lyon, so I just.
Captain Lyons, right. Came up and basically took care of Bloody Island, Badona Patti. And, yeah. And then wasn't satisfied, so he went over to the Russian River and took care of another village. And just a mess. But, you know, that's, that's all part of Lake County history that needs a place to be told. I mean, most people aren't even aware of the massacre that took place in 1838 when Valleo came up with 80 people and slaughtered the village of Camden, which is Buckingham Island, Anderson Island. There was a huge village there. And he came up and he wanted to take these people down to help him harvest his grain crop, and they said no. And they ended up in the dancehouse, and they lit the dancehouse on fire. And the folks at Elium chased him and his people out of Lake County. And that's when Valleo decided, eh, I don't really want this area. I think I'll sell off my holdings up there to Stone and Kelsey. And we know how that turned out. So, yeah, there's a, there's a whole section of history here that needs to be told, that needs to be available, in addition to the triumphs of the past 20,000 years of culture here in Lake County. I mean, these, these people lived through two global warming episodes, two periods of over, no, one global warming episode, two periods of overpopulation, had to deal with unequal distribution of food resources. And just, you know, it's incredible. I mean, the amount of knowledge and information within the Native American community and within the cultural sites that are left behind is phenomenal. And we can learn a lot from the 20,000 years of experience that has gone before us here.
Any other questions or comments? I know that you had a couple of asks up on your last page, and Supervisor Pyska alluded to that. I think one is something that typically staff is in charge of deciding what can and cannot be displayed in the lobby. Obviously, if it's something that needs to be brought to us, you can work with staff. And if it comes back for a decision, obviously, we'll deal with that then. But the chamber, the chamber's on its own. We can't tell the chamber what to put in their own building, but reach out to the interim, I want to say CEO, Greg Folsom.
Right.
I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss with you what's possible over there. The rest, I think, we'll have to have deeper discussions before saying where that will go. But it's important to acknowledge, it's important to remember, and it's even more important to learn from our history, whether it's our recent history or our ancient history that we have all around us. And history surrounds us at all times. So appreciate your work and how you are involved in keeping the history alive in Lake County, and appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item, on this presentation? I see no hands up in the Zoom room, and no one moving in the chamber. Again, appreciate it. And please have those conversations with CAO Parker about what's possible in the lobby, and we'll see where that goes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our 1:00 PM presentation in consideration of a letter of support for the Elevate Youth California Youth Substance Use Disorder Prevention Program Cohort Six Standard Track Funding Opportunity. And this is from Supervisor Pyska and Vice Chair Crandall. And Mr. Bill, please come on all the way up. Welcome.
Thank you to the board. I didn't have a more formal presentation like Mr. Parker did, so I apologize. But I'll just do it more traditionally, just, I guess, just orally. But my, good afternoon. My name is Kyle Bill. I'm a descendant of the Kletzel de Hiwin Tu Nation, also the Executive Director of Konokotai Native Wellness, which is a nonprofit that we started here in Lake County in 2016 on the Aboriginal homelands of the Ilema people. We're very proud to have a team comprised entirely of cultural practitioners that are active in their culture ceremonies here in Lake County. Most of our staff are either from Ilema or from Big Valley Rancheria. And so we've been doing a lot of work within Lake County since 2016 formally, but also prior to that, we've been doing community work as community organizers throughout the region. And so we're seeking, the last two and a half, almost three years, we were recipient of California Elevate Youth Program. It's a capacity-building grant. And we've been doing, building up our programming over the last two to three years. And we've been invited to apply for the Cohort Six that Chair Sabatier mentioned through Elevate Youth, and it's a million-dollar grant over a three-year period. And what that grant will allow us to do is to expand upon the programs that we've been building over the last two to three years. Within that timeframe, we've been really fortunate to build strong relationships with the local seven tribes here in Lake County. And we've been providing different support for even tribal programs, such as Lake County Tribal Health. We've even worked with the local, you know, Circle Native Mines in the past as well. But really, the goal of our program is to really look at our historical, as Mr. Parker was talking about, you know, our historical experiences and our traditional knowledge, and how we weave that into modern Western practices when it comes to health and wellness. And so what we've done with these many different agencies and even school districts, we've provided, especially with, we're really proud of the fact, you know, with a lot of the things that are happening in the county, one of the school districts has been most responsive to cultural awareness and cultural presentations is the Kelseyville School District. We've, in the past, held teacher-wide training over the summer break to provide professional development for the staff at Kelseyville Unified School District. And they've also invited us in years past to come and do presentations to all of the local schools within the school district of Kelseyville during Native American Heritage Month. So we've provided robust presentations to elementary, middle school, and high school students. And we've also done some of that, those same presentations at Burns Valley Elementary, and also here in Lakeport with Terrace Middle School. So we've been developing, you know, a lot of our programming around not only youth development, but also education within the tribal community and the non-tribal community. We've been doing cultural awareness trainings here in the county and have worked with the Lake County Office of Education providing those trainings, and anyone else in the region that's been requesting those. So we've been really building up a lot of our programming, and it's been really well-received. And so what we're here today to do is to ask the county to submit a letter of support for us to apply for the grant. Obviously, you know, it's not a guarantee, but it would definitely help us to be in a better position to show that it is the, not only the tribal community that's supporting our work, but also our non-native partners that can support our work. You know, and I believe that this is, you know, a step, you know, understanding for generations that our tribe in this regions have been faced with enduring impacts of colonization, you know, the loss of our land, culture, and community. And despite these challenges, our people have remained resilient, continuing to preserve our traditions, language, and cultural practices. We, as KNWI, want to ensure that this strength is passed to our youth while addressing critical issues such as substance use disorder, mental health, and cultural disconnection. We aren't a large outside entity, but a grassroots organization rooted in this community. You know, we had talked about a 20,000-year history. And so we bring that knowledge into today's practices and best practices in how to revitalize our tribal communities through wellness and healing. And so I'm open to any questions you might have or any, you know, possible partnering in the future, what that might look like. Because as we continue to grow, our small team will continue to expand. And hopefully, the end goal would be more and more, not only tribal, but even our non-native allies can reach out for different services and sharing of best practices when it comes to delivering, you know, services within the county to our native population.
Well, Kyle, I really appreciate you reaching out with this opportunity. And also looping in Director Jones, who's in the back, who's equally excited to offer this support. So if you all haven't had a chance to connect yet, that's where she is. And this is, this is just another opportunity to cross-support and collaborate for the benefit of everybody that lives here on all of our communities. And so I'm just happy that we can, we can offer this support and hope you get it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, definitely bringing in those state resources to our county is so important to address a lot of the needs. You know, we have a lot of very strong tribal programs. You know, each of the tribes have very robust programs as well. And so what we like to do is just amplify some of those programs by going to the different tribal communities and supporting them in their programs any way that we can, whether it's providing workshops. We have trained facilitators on staff when it comes to some of the evidence-based programming, such as White Bison's, you know, recovery program. We have trained facilitators in motherhood and fatherhood sacred programs. The vision with those is to hopefully build a stronger relationship within the county so that the courts could recognize and honor those programs as also ways that, you know, parents and families are involved, perhaps in the criminal justice system or, you know, that are, you know, involved in the foster care system, that those can be resources that can provide culturally relevant and culturally appropriate services that are recognized and honored as things that our families and our families connect to, as a way to bring about healing and reunification, or, you know, not reducing that justice-involved, you know, communities being justice-involved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kyle, for bringing this to us, and Supervisor Pyska for sponsoring this, co-sponsoring this. And I've, you know, I know that all the work that you do in the community, and I've been, I've been even seeing it work for families. And it's another way to engage that a lot of times, folks don't have the opportunity to have services like the ones you provide. So full support of this, and we're hoping you get the grant.
Yeah, and just touched base, one of the aspects of the grant as well is to engage more youth in the civil, you know, this, the election process and more civil engagement. And so we've been slowly doing that. We've been partnering with the California Native Vote. You know, many in the county might recollect, we partnered with Robinson Rancheria to host a voter registration party as being a smaller population within the county. But being in a rural county, votes really have an impact. And so we want to engage tribal members, tribal citizens to be more engaged in that process, you know, voting. And so one of the major challenges and barriers that we recognize is there's a lack of voter, voters being registered in the tribal community. And so that has been one of the things that we've been working on. We'd like to utilize this grant to build upon that, especially with younger voters that might not be as involved or aware of kind of how that local, how local elections look and how to navigate that. So that is also one aspect that we're looking to do is engage and build up young people's more involvement within the tribal community, not just in elections, but also in leadership in general, tribal leadership as well.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. Very excited to offer support. I did do a little digging while you were talking. People that are interested and want to do additional research can go to elevateyouthca.org and get a little more information on this current round of cohort funding. But one thing I was pleased and also a little surprised to see was this grant money comes from Proposition 64, the cannabis tax and the legalization measure passed in 2016. And among the challenges for applicants for this cohort is to research what local cannabis taxes look like or lack thereof, and how or lack thereof and how a county in this case might be spending its cannabis tax revenues. So I know you're not here to deep dive into the joys of local cannabis regulation or cannabis tax policy, but I do see an intersection here. So I think the letter before us today is the very least we can do, but there is a challenge to you as an applicant and to us as a county to better understand what we are doing with our cannabis tax revenues and whether we are routing them appropriately to things like this. You mentioned evidence-based education, which I love to hear, and that's definitely a big theme in Proposition 64. But it's hard to message some of that stuff. It seems to me, depending on the program and the source of the funding, we're kind of going back to the eighties where it's all just say no. So can you just flesh out just a little bit what evidence-based education looks like from your context and how you're actually going to go about doing the job here?
Yeah, so I appreciate the question. You know, that is one of the biggest challenges that we face, especially with Indigenous communities, is trying to, you know, persuade those within positions of power, especially when it comes to funders, is how do we show and demonstrate that our traditional practices are evidence-based? Because we often only refer to that within, within the Western context, right? And so has a program been studied? Has a program been validated by academics to show that that is, that it has, that it's impactful, that it has a positive effect? And so what we do is, there have been other Native organizations that have really taken up because of their capacity, like White Bison, to go through that process. And they've developed a curricula that has gone through, you know, being evidence-based proven and have incorporated, and they share that with other tribal communities. And so we've sent trainers out. And what's really neat about the curriculum that we utilize, it's adaptable to be culturally relevant to the local community. And so having cultural practitioners on our team, we are able to take that curriculum and adapt it to meet our needs. And so utilizing that in the community or into the agencies that we work with has, it's been helpful. But again, we, we try to also bring up this discussion to recognize that our traditional knowledge and our traditional practices are equally relevant and are to us evidence-based because they are still existent. We do know that it works, many times we refer to always saying, "Culture is prevention." You know, and studies are starting to show that more youth that are connected to their culture, connected to their communities are less likely to be involved in the criminal justice system. They are less likely to be, you know, involved in substance use. So we're slowly starting to build that capacity. We would love to hear locally to start to develop some of those programs that are more relevant to our tribal communities and working with our tribes here to develop something like that and partnering with local, you know, educational institutions to help build up programs that could be quote-unquote "evidence-based."
Thank you for bringing this item. As you're speaking and presenting what the letter will support, I might be wrong with what I say, but I don't believe that I've seen you at the meetings regarding the opioid settlements. And I'm hopeful that you will, in your conversation with Director Jones, discuss when that will be coming and is that, is there a possibility of collaboration? There's going to be a lot of decision-making that will occur with how to use the opioid settlements. But I know of the work that you do, appreciate the work that you do, and this is a great opportunity to support that work, and I hope you can get the grant. But we have some upcoming decisions to make on how to enhance and increase the work done in our community to really, how to attack the issue of opioids in our communities. And I think every community is being hit, some stronger than others, unfortunately. But I think there's a potential place for that. And so I'm hoping to see you in further conversations to both hear that you have received this grant and how, and how we can continue to collaborate together. So thank you again.
Definitely, thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, obviously, the letter's a no-brainer. So thank you for bringing it, I appreciate that. So thank you for having this, an opportunity to vote on this. My one question to you though, Kyle, is do you know if any other tribes or anybody else is going for this same grant or anything? Have you talked to anybody?
I have, I usually share it. I've, I've shared it with other tribes outside of the region also.
Okay.
I know Big Valley Rancheria has, has received funding in the past. I haven't really, but I'm not aware of anyone, no one's shared with me that they've also applied. But yeah, I know that there are, usually those email lists include a lot of different programs, and I'm not aware specifically of any other tribes in our area that are.
Just want to make sure we're getting all the support. Obviously, from Middletown's standpoint, I will check and we'll get back to you and make sure we're not going after the same thing. I think if we can all work together to bring that money to you, and you know, I don't know about Robinson, just checking on these things, we're not competing against each other, especially in this forum, would be really good. So obviously, supporting the letters, support the work that you guys are doing. And yeah, we'll be collaborating more in the future, too. I see emails a bunch on my tribal side that we're already talking about things. So appreciate that, and yeah, let's just keep it going.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands raised in the Zoom room, no movement in the chamber, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, so I'll go ahead, Mr. Chair, to motion, let me see. There we go, I want to make sure I say the right thing. So I'll motion to approve a letter of support for the Elevate Youth California Youth Substance Use Disorder Prevention Program Cohort Six, standard track funding opportunity, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second, oh, sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, best of luck.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Kyle.
Next is our 1:30 PM item, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Smart Easy Pay Incorporated DBA Easy Smart Pay. We do have our treasurer, tax collector here with us. I did receive an email earlier this morning that this conversation will be postponed as further conversations and negotiations will occur. I do, I, just for full disclosure, I did email CSAC this morning with some of my concerns, and that seems to have created the need for CSAC to want to have more conversations with our tax collector. And I'm going to guess that I might be involved since I am the CSAC representative. Checking in if anybody wants to comment.
No, I, I think I had a lot of the same questions. So just let me know if a meeting gets set up to go through those.
You are part of CSAC, no matter if you're the alternate or not, so if you want to be there. Patrick, please, if we can make sure that Supervisor Pyska is invited as well. All right. So without further comment, let me just open it up for public comment about delaying this item to further, a unidentified date in the future. Whenever our tax collector brings it back, open it up for public comment. It got very serious in the room all of a sudden. All right, we'll bring it back. We're going to move on to 6.9. Actually, I'm going to have to wait just about 30 seconds. Can't start early.
Item 7.6.
Yeah, why not? Let's do that. Item 7.6, thank you. Consideration of the following appointment to the Big Valley Advisory Council. We have one application, Brandon Beza?
Beza.
Is that correct, Beza? Any comments, questions regarding that applicant?
We had, the last person that we had appointed for the tribal seat resigned. And so this, Brandon is stepping up to fill the seat.
Okay. If there's nothing further, open it up for public comment regarding the applicant prior to appointment. And seeing none from the board chambers or Zoom, bring it back for action.
I move that we appoint Brandon Beza to the Big Valley Advisory Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, good idea. It's now 2:00 PM. 6.9, consideration of discussion of a resolution of intention to form the Lake County Hospital Improvement District and setting a date for a public hearing. I did see we have a number of folks here in the room. We only have four seats, but I would love for some of you to get comfortable so that we can have a back-and-forth, have some questions, and also a presentation of the item. I am going to pass it on to CAO Parker to go ahead and kick us off and introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Chair. DCAO Ben Rickelman will be introducing this item with all the individuals from Sutter Hospital.
Do you have more chairs?
One of these, any of them's fine. This is fine. Good afternoon, Ben Rickelman. I'm a deputy county administrative officer for the County of Lake. We have the administrators for Sutter Lakeside Health and Adventist Health Clear Lake, the two hospitals here in Lake County, and their council regarding this improvement district. I'm going to let Chuck Cassis and Tim Stevens take it away and give an intro over the need of this and kind of how this mechanism works, and happy to interject at any time.
Please take it away.
Good afternoon.
And you're, you're going to have to talk in the microphone or else I'm going to get some looks from the videography guy in the back, Sam.
Okay, and you guys, yours, okay?
Yes.
So thank you for allowing us time today to present this. And I do want to point out, this is a joint action from, pardon? Oh, I'm Tim Stevens, I'm the CEO at Sutter Lakeside Hospital, thank you, Chuck. And this is a joint action with the two hospitals coming together and how we can improve the services and what we're providing in the community, really around building sustainability for the health systems. As you know, rural healthcare is a challenging environment to work in. There's not a lot of sustainability as we look at seismic requirements and investments in the community. So we're really looking at how do we create the next 70 years of healthcare in this community? And our organization's been here 70-plus years, and I know Adventist has as well. So we're really looking at that. And this is a mechanism that will allow us to do that without impacting the local taxpayers or the local public in any sense in that, but it will allow us to invest more, increase sustainability in the community.
Good afternoon, Chuck Cassis, hospital administrator at Adventist Health Clear Lake. You know, this is a collaborative effort. We're here together because our two hospitals run at a negative deficit annually. And in order to continue to provide the great care that we're able to provide our community, we need other sources of revenue streams to come in to be able to augment what we're doing. It's not going to come from the government straight up. It's not going to come from a large source of commercial patients coming into the area. We have to be creative in how we look at things, and this is one way that we can do it without impacting the community. These are dollars that are there that the, the state could access, but they don't. And so we're going to utilize this improvement district to be able to tap into those resources, to be able to hopefully get us to a break-even point so we can continue on.
And I'll just add, high level, so utilizing the 1994 Public Benefit Improvement District. So it's typically used for place-based community or economic development. It can be either a property-based or a business-based assessment. This would be a business-based assessment for just these two hospitals. So they would be the only two entities participating, the only two that would be assessed. It would be on their net patient revenue. And utilizing this assessment will then be leveraged to get more money from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So the federal entity that controls those two federal health programs. So basically, they're assessing themselves to get more money from the federal government through the, the calculation for Medicaid reimbursement, CalMed here. I'll let council maybe go into a little more detail of that process.
And just real quick, I was reminded by my colleague, I just want to make sure that we do introductions so the public knows who's speaking. I apologize for that, thank you both for doing so. Ben, if we can start with you, and then we'll move on to council.
Sure.
Ben Rickelman, I'm a deputy county administrative officer here at Lake County Government with a focus on economic development.
I'm Jim Jerset with the law firm of Jerset and Lorenz, and I represent both Sutter and Adventist.
Zach Vigtinbaum with Jerset and Lorenz as well.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, I interjected. Any other further comments for your presentation? Are you open for questions and comments?
I would just make, like, just to make clear, it was kind of already stated. So with this assessment, two things. One is, it's not going to have an impact on patient billing here. So with people getting medical service at these two hospitals, they're not paying to support this. Number two, as required by the bid law, this additional revenue is not going to support existing services. It has to be above and beyond kind of current spending. So the two hospitals have plans that they could speak to in further detail what the spending would go towards.
Please. And this would be the management district plan, AKA plan, as it says in the agreement?
So specifically in that, really looking at the seismic upgrades for our hospital, talking about some of the specific things we're spend on. Money around MRI and imaging upgrades are currently, you know, things that we're working on and working towards. Increasing our ambulatory footprint throughout the county in that space as well. And then just, you know, the sizes, seismic upgrades are pretty substantial in that. And I know the state law was just going through kind of what those requirements are and trying to delay on that because they continue to go on that. So a lot of it comes into that sustainability. There are programs that are, we're going that's going to create sustainability for our organization and allow us to do more. But, and as I've mentioned to many people, when the hospitals are being supplemented by outside money to the point we can't invest into the community when we're at a loss. So Sutter looks at, in 2022, Sutter Lakeside Hospital lost $5.5 million from operations. That $5.5 million was passed over to Sutter, to us, to maintain operations on that. So going forward, being able to sustain operations means that we can go into growth mode and do more for the community in that sense. We're currently restricted on capital investments because, you know, when you're at a loss, you can't generate income to create more investments in the community.
And our plan echoes the same things that Tim outlined. They would go for very much similar projects.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Hi. A-plus for creativity, but I hope we have council here because I'm going to start off with the observation that under the citation you offer under the Street and Highways Code that would allow you enough wiggle room to attempt this, I'm not seeing it. And I'm looking not just at the particular law that you cited, but the whole canon under Street and Highways where over the past 100 years plus the state has examined the creation of parking areas, parking districts, improvements that would benefit business districts. And I guess the common theme in there is the notion of a district containing multiple businesses or areas where commercial activities are happening. The word improvements looms large. Improving your bottom line is not improvement as used in the context of these laws. So again, the A-plus for creativity, but what you're proposing here is very unusual. If I heard right, it would be the first one in the state of California. And I don't know, and you know, county council can loop himself in at some appropriate time. But my initial reading of this, not being a lawyer, is, other than the A-plus for creativity, I just can't hang my hat on anything that you're proposing here. So lacking any district, I get that the hospitals are the businesses, but I don't get that the district is there. I don't see any improvements in this ask. And because of the time-limited nature of this particular assessment, the things you're talking about, your business models are chronic problems. You know, it ain't going to get easier on that reimbursement front in five years. So even if we agree this is the best mousetrap to approach this particular issue with, it doesn't appear to me to be sustainable because it's at best a very temporary fix. You know, you come back and ask. you come back and ask us to re-up on this idea time and again. So can you just speak to the big elephant in the room? I don't see a district of, I see like-minded businesses, definitely in the same financial straits, but I don't see the districts, other than the countywide district that the hospitals serve, and I don't see the improvements that the assessment that you're going to place on yourself would create. So can you walk me through that, turning to council or whoever else you want to do that?
Did the county council want to start, or you want to have Zach start with the history of the?
Let's go ahead and start with you guys.
Okay. Zach, there are a bunch of questions in there, which is okay. If we miss some, just let me know. Zach is going to start kind of with the history of what you're talking about, because it is interesting. There's a lot of business improvement districts in the state of California. It's one of the only states that has something like this, and I actually didn't understand the history either, why it's there. Interestingly, Zach does understand the history, so he will walk you through what we understand of it.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Green. So I think that we would completely agree and concede that the parking improvement area of the, that in its early progeny or the initial statutes were incredibly limited, and they go back, I think there are about half a dozen iterations in the last 100 years. The earliest one was very restricted to just when cars were becoming more and more prevalent, and localities recognized the need for, we need parking spaces and street lighting. Since then, it is the legislative history and just the practical use of these, excuse me, has evolved to localities saying, wow, these limited uses work really, really well, and we need, as localities, broader latitude. And so I think that, as you'll see, as you move from the, you know, the original very restricted through the 89 law, and now the most recent, the 94 law, the, from a legal standpoint, the uses, the localities have really broad discretion in how they use, so much so that today, there are hundreds, and we appreciate the applause for the creativity, but we don't think it's that creative. Today, this is exactly how you operate, how the county operates, the Lake County Tourism Improvement District, where you have a group of hospitals, sorry, hotels, or lodging businesses that have come to you and asked to tax themselves, to pool resources, to hopefully generate more resources, and we think it's essentially not distinguishable from that. There are tourism, uses for tourism and lodging businesses and hotels is by far the most common in the state of California, but there are ones for restaurants and that also rely on the 94 law. So that's where we are.
I would distinguish them, but I'm not going to belabor that point, and again, I think the number of businesses, TID you mentioned, for example, or restaurants, much bigger chunks of beneficiaries. So you can expand on that if you want, but it's not critical to my thing. It is creative, and I'll leave it at that.
It's different. They don't have any for the Medicaid program in the state. There are a number of different programs that you have that draw exactly the same mechanism, utilize the same theory as we're utilizing here for this county. The difference is, in this county, they're saying, will you help us help ourselves? And you're right, there's only two hospitals. I have no idea what the economic impact is of those two hospitals in these communities, but it's very rare that it's not a large economic incap on a rural community, which is why a lot of rural communities do these across country, for this exact reason. Shockingly, states are not going to come and help all the rural hospitals. They try, but they can't help them as much. From a sustainability standpoint, unless the state starts paying up to the Medicaid maximum amount, I have no idea why this would ever go away. The programs I've designed across the country are 25 years old. I'm an old man. It's, they don't go away. People ask every year what happens with so-and-so is going to be elected. Like, I don't know, it's a Medicaid program, it's the government, who knows what's going to happen tomorrow, but they've never gone away yet. California relies on hospital provider taxes for how many billion dollars of healthcare for Medicaid program?
12-ish.
12 billion today, so we'd be adding 30 million whole dollars.
Yep.
Pretty small amount for the state of California, but for the county, it makes a big difference. On an improvement standpoint, I don't know how the business improvement districts that are tourism or anything else can prove out that additional revenue is going to show improvement into their facilities, but I certainly understand, and I don't know Chuck's hospital as well, but a critical access hospital, they're operating with shoe strings and mousetraps. And so additional revenue to these guys is going to generate additional resources to serve your community. And again, I don't know how much the community goes to the hospitals versus the hotels. I would guess a lot of the community goes to the hospitals and use them, but I had to get here from Sonoma, and there doesn't seem like a lot of stuff around here. Very pretty place. So you guys can talk about improvements to hit that piece of, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. I would like to speak to improvements. I know I talked about sustainability, but I want to talk about what we don't do if we don't have sustainability. You talk about the bottom line, which that's one way to look at it, but without improvement on that, we don't make investments, and I can lay five investments that we're trying to make that we're not able to make at this point, and Chuck will be able to do very similar for them. So seismic upgrades for our hospital, about $15 million, we're in phase three.
And pause there. Without these seismic upgrades, the state of California could basically shut us down. So we have to be seismically compliant to the state's law by 2023, or 2030.
Okay, let's ride with that. If you had come to us with a plan for a bond measure or something like that, or an improvement district that would fund that type of actual improvement, you have two of the things I'm looking for. I'm looking for actual improvement, I'm looking for tangible assets that will be created through that funding. TID, you're right, it's a little nebulous, but there's at least tangible assets. We have websites, we have third-party contractors, we have some idea that we want to improve the fortunes of, again, multiple businesses through these activities. This proposal, again, doesn't speak directly to tangible assets or improvement of the facilities such that is typical under this area of state law. I'm not saying this isn't a great idea, using other areas or other mechanisms, waiting on the feds, yeah, I don't think I'm young enough to get that done either, but it's just, I need that improvement. I need that nexus with the Street and Highways Code here.
So I'm going to try to interject. I just want to make sure that we hear from other board members, just because I don't want to keep responding to a question that may be from a minority perspective. It might still need to be discussed a little further, but I'd love to hear from other board members.
You mentioned TID, and there was nothing really in place in the beginning either, but just the thought of forming it so that they can create some sort of funding to help attract people to come here. So I think, I see this in that stage when it started in 2018, 2019, so I don't see it the same way. I think it's a good idea, so we've got to try something.
Any other comments or questions? So I do have a couple of comments and questions. I, whether you want to call it creative or not, I like the idea of how can we enhance healthcare in Lake County. We know that costs are going up, we're looking at increased costs on our end. How do we make sure that we maintain at the very least what we have, if not being able to get more? Again, not going to harp on it just because it's negative, but we don't have the best health metric outcomes, and we need to ensure we at least don't go further down. There's a couple of things in here that I just want to ask briefly. One is, and it almost contradicts a little bit some of the stuff that you say. I think you guys contribute back to the community. It's not just your hospital and your clinics. What I want to make sure is, and I was talking to CAO Parker regarding this, I don't know what the terminology is. She's telling me it's not supplanting. I thought it was called maintenance of effort. We'll see what that is. But the idea that whatever you're already contributing back to the community to support, because the healthcare systems we have today have not always been the same healthcare systems that you guys are running today. At one point, there was a shift where, and maybe it was a national switch and not just a Adventist Health or Sutter Health switch, but the idea that healthcare starts in the community, not once you walk through the doors of a hospital. And so I've been seeing a lot more activities within the community, and I greatly appreciate that because it creates a better partnership, in my opinion. But what you're already doing, I want to make sure it doesn't just get swapped over with what you're going to get from doing the hospital improvement district, and that it complements what you're already doing. And so I don't know if there's a way to kind of term that, that it will add to all the activities that you're already engaged in with the community, so that there's greater benefits and not just the same as it was before, and now you're getting extra access to funds that you didn't have access to before. The other part, it does speak to a plan, and I feel like there should be a written plan. I don't know if that's Exhibit A, I don't believe it is, but it speaks to a district management plan, or I don't have it right in front of me, and I think that granted today is just a day to say, yes, we approve to go for the protest vote, but I would think that that needs to be, or whatever the vote is, but I think that needs to be made available to really understand what is that plan that you're discussing, so that it's not this nebulous idea of, and I appreciate some of the details that you've provided today, but I think that needs to be a document that we can hold and read and ensure that we can hold you accountable to that when we say, hey, these are the things you try to convince us to vote yes on because of these things. And I see that, I did something because Mr. Rickelman is here.
Beat us to it.
There is a proposed district management plan, so it's electronic version. I can send it out to the board members, and we can also post it with item.
Okay. I think it would be really helpful to have that. There's one other thing that I sent you in a text as my question that I can't remember.
Consumer protection for pricing.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that, and this was discussed, but I don't see it in there, and I don't even know how to write it in. Healthcare cost changes, your insurance is just as bad as our insurance, you have to deal with doctor's insurance and hospital insurance and all those things, so I know that costs rise and we can't say you're frozen, but I just want to make sure that your consumer costs aren't going to change because now you're taxing yourself. I want to make sure that our folks have the same level of access at the same cost as things progress outside. So those were some of my concerns. I think the idea of the district is not even an issue for me. We have a perfect example of this, of the Tourism Improvement District. Hotels are all over the place. They don't have to be in one specific location. You identify hospitals. We have a lot of clinics and a lot of healthcare providers, but not more than the two hospitals. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward. I think this is an interesting concept, and it mirrors what I've seen be successful in Clear Lake, where they've taxed themselves for roads, which has opened up new fundings that are available at the state level because they're taxing themselves. You would be doing the exact same thing, and this money would be coming here in this location. So those are my comments. I'm going to call on Supervisor Pisca since she has her pen up.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working on the TID for so many years now, even unofficially before I was on this board, and so watched it grow from a tiny little baby, and it is, the impact is always going to be nebulous on that, even though we do have a handful of assets, including websites, it's really hard to know. But I think that this could have some clear impacts, and I just, you know, I think it just needs to be said over and over that the impact to the patient will be zero. Right, yeah, just say that a lot.
Zero.
However, though, with these expansions and investments and improvements, then we know that there's actually going to be quite a lot of benefits for the patients, and you were talking about pricing, and we know that going to get services at rural hospitals, like if you need to get an MRI, are way more expensive here. And so is there a possibility that those types of prices, pricing could be competitive, more competitive than they are now with new investments?
Yeah, can I answer a couple of different things that were brought up at one time, if I may?
Please.
As far as community benefit goes, you talk about where we do what we're doing now and do more, and as, if I can go as a business person and operator of a hospital, and I know many people are, currently, we are resource scarce, so I can't do everything I want to do now because I'm managing this budget, I'm managing this, and I have to, I have scarce resources, I have to manage that way. So not having to manage that and having resources that I can pull from will make a genuine difference in what we're able to do in the community in a meaningful way in the public health forum, which I think you're referring to. How do we get into the community anymore and get healthy in that space? And, you know, we're working a lot of things on that, you know, even the park we're talking about down in Middletown, that's really looking at population health. How do we get people outside? And so we're looking at how we make a difference in that space and in that, and when you just barely make it and you don't know how you're going to keep yourself open, then you can't think about that. And I applaud Adventist and Sutter and our prior administrators who have done in that space when there's not been resources available. This will make it easier to do that and easier to go into that space. Costs for patients and how systems are priced, right or wrong, we don't do cost-based pricing. Our pricing is set across system levels on that, and it's based on a cost of Medicare. It's not based on the cost of services on that. If we priced out services and priced it that way, they'd be all over the places. It's not priced in a logical way, so there's no relation to this and how we price services and how we do that. The opposite, when you're losing money, the figure out how to get more money coming in tempts you to raise prices, but we, Sutter and what I know about Adventist, none of the hospitals are allowed to raise individual prices within that. It's a market look at that prices and how we do the pricing on that. That way, we're sure that we're being fair consistently across that. There's been a lot of health systems over the years have been in trouble for varying prices across that, so we try and be very consistent in that, and what we have done is look and see where we may be out of line in prices with some of our other areas around us to see how we get better in that space. And then both organizations offer sliding scales, Medi-Cal sign-up, and other ways to help people that don't have that. So we, our community benefit dollars for, Sutter Health was over a trillion dollars last year. What we did across all the communities that Sutter serves, and that's our 800 million, it was almost a trillion in that space. So the amount of care that Sutter's providing that's not compensated for is enormous, and his amount of care here locally, we don't ask anybody, do you have insurance? We care for the person that walks in our door, and I know my partner Adventist says the same.
Yeah, our mission's not going to change with or without these dollars. We will still do all the things that we do for the community. This most recent fire that was almost right behind the hospital, we've got our shower trailers out there right now, providing showers for people who are displaced, who don't have a place to get clean so that they can go to work. We're doing that. That work is not going to stop, whether we get these dollars or not. I would like to address one thing that Supervisor Green brought up, and I do think that why this is different and why this could be so impactful is that you say no cost to the patient, but I think more importantly, there's no cost to the community. So no resident, whether you come to our hospital or not, is going to be impacted if this goes forward. These are dollars that are already there that we will be able to get back without a cost to the community, and so versus a bond where we would actually try to leverage something, this actually probably is a better solution for us.
I can get two of the questions real quick. In the specific language of the documents, we have prohibited them from passing any costs on to the patients or the community. So that has been addressed ahead of time. They wouldn't have done it anyway, but we put that in there for you. On the quality piece, if this gets through where we want it to go, there actually is a requirement under federal law that we have a quality component to the program, so we'll have to meet that as well. So a certain amount of quality will have to be developed into the program. Once we get to the state level, we'll decide from, we don't get to decide anything. The state will tell us, and the feds will tell us, here's the quality initiatives that we think are most important. We will say, here's what's important in Lake County, because you're going to be different than the rest of the country, just because you're like, everyone's different, and we will try and work those in, but that will be part of the funding that they come in. It comes with hooks, and one of the hooks is you have to meet your quality standards that are set up under this program.
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the collaboration here because it wasn't that long ago and it was competitive, and it only makes-
It's still competitive from an electric-
Okay. All right. But we are- But we are in the same room together, sitting down, working on a collaborative approach to serve all of the members of our region. So I just want to say that I appreciate both of you bringing this.
I do want to comment on that. Last week, we were discussing other issues in the community without money associated with how we can work together as health systems. So this collaboration is not surface for this, it's true and genuine in what we're trying to do for the community.
Yeah, I've been, I've noticed in a lot of other spaces too.
Supervisor Simon?
I appreciate it. You hear me use the word all the time, thinking outside of the box, doing things we haven't done. So I appreciate the collaboration, Ben, I appreciate the conversations that are happening, you know, been hearing a little something about something's coming to us, so excited to see this stuff, we'll see. A couple of technical questions. You said you've set these up in other states or anything, so if this was to be challenged, besides the voters who have to say something, who would it be challenged by? Who would, who would challenge this? Where would the challenge come from?
You know, the feds aren't really going to say anything at all about this, this is not going to be a federal issue.
Yeah.
This will be the state, if they have some other, if they have a beef against Lake County, I've been told they don't, but it's a state. No idea if there's somebody that just has an out for you, or if the state is coming up with something else that they think this gets in the way of. That's the only thing that I can think of that anyone would care about from a negative standpoint in all the various states, we're in 35 or 40 states or something like that. So it doesn't change, politics doesn't change, people, how they attack don't change. When you have both hospitals in the community, if there's a small hospital in the community that's going to be taxed and doesn't do any Medicaid, they would come after it hard.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we're looking at it with a clear, long-term picture.
If there was a specialty hospital that didn't do Medicaid, they would say, I don't want this, because you're going to get paid Medicaid increases, that's your, that is your tangible asset, is money. You're going to improve your, your dollar signs under the Medicaid program, how they use that is what they're, what you guys are talking to them about. But that's what this is going to develop for you, is you're going to have more physical dollars coming in for the Medicaid population.
Okay, appreciate that. I just wanted to ask that question and look at that. The other thing is, you know, something we need here in the community is cancer care, care for cancer. We send these poor folks that are dealing with the worst thing you can deal with. My mother died of lung cancer, it's horrible, but you got to travel an hour, doesn't matter if you're going to a kayak, doesn't matter if you're going anywhere, would this be a possibility? I know you can't say yeah right now, but god darn, we need it really bad. So anyway, I'm throwing that out there, you don't have to answer, but I'm hoping or being optimistic.
I can, I would answer and welcome. You know, we are talking about that within Sutter, how we can achieve that, we haven't figured it out yet, because it is, the sustainability of a cancer program is bigger dollars than we're talking about here, honestly. But we are looking at that, how we could sustain it. We've brought a model that I saw in Washington where three hospitals came together and joint ventured a cancer center. So I think this is a first step of Sutter and Adventist Health coming together and saying, are there opportunities to joint venture locally to scale up to be able to provide services? But that's not a promise, it's just, it's things that we have to look at differently because neither hospital's big enough to run a cancer service in town and split it. So we need to look at how we can do it together, and, you know, this is kind of that first step with other things that we're working on.
So for me, as long as this is a first step to open up that conversation a little bit more, that's a positive step forward, because we all know, sitting on different boards, LTA, APC, Lake Links, you know, how we get these folks out of the county to these places is really important. The other thing, ultimately, I won't hash over everything that's been talked about, and Bruno, this is not a 218 process, or this is a 218 process, so I'll make sure.
It's not a 218.
Thank you very much, Ben.
It's business, not property.
Yeah, right.
Done with that.
Okay, just making sure. The other thing is, in one of the whereas's here, I think the, the county will request consent from the city of Clear Lake to form the proposed district that encompasses the prospective jurisdiction as required by district law. Have those conversations happened, or if we vote today, then those conversations will happen?
I present-
I'm really hoping, we've, everybody's waiting for us to say yes or no.
I presented to the city of Clear Lake last week-
Okay.
-and was very well received. And so depending upon your work here, it will then allow me to go back to the city and get the resolution from them.
Excellent. I want to make sure, I hadn't heard that yet, so.
And while not a requirement for Lakeport to support this, I've been to the Lakeport City Council as well and have a statement, a resolution from them supporting this, you know, in, in theory, they don't have a jurisdiction over-
Yeah, Sutter's in the county, so I understand why it's only Clear Lake on there, but-
But I just wanted to wrap around and tell you kind of the efforts that we've gone to make sure we create community alignment around this activity and what we're trying to do here, that we don't have to have Clear Lake, I'm sorry, Lakeport support us, but we want their support, we want broad community support for what we're trying to do.
We heard our conversation earlier on a support letter, as much support and being focused on it is really important to bring into Lake County. So if you guys understand where I'm going with this, I am in support of this, but I had some questions I wanted to ask, so.
And that should bring out, if there's anybody for any crazy question that comes out, with them going to the cities, that'll get it deeper down in the level, find, is there someone that would have a problem with this to one of your other questions? I can't imagine they would, but that'll help to find that out.
And just to comment on process, so this is with the 94 PBID law, this is a resolution of intention. We then, even though there's only two entities, we still have to mail ballots, and then once that starts, it starts a 45-day clock, and then we can have the public hearing, and then the resolution of formation is the last step by the county government if it goes forward. And then just another process comment regarding county operations and collection, we would collect a 1% fee for managing this, because it does have impact with the treasurer collector and staff time. And then also with that, this does still require state and federal approval, as mentioned, so the assessment would not be dispersed to the hospitals until that happened. So we would make sure we had all the legal approvals on the levels of governments before kind of the operation of this assessment district would happen.
I'm going to go to Supervisor Green and then come back to you, Supervisor Green.
Okay, just very quickly, I have read the plan, thank you for sending that along, Mr. Rickelman. The plan is this, we collect the money, $15 million a year, if I read right, close to $85 million over the five-year term, and we send it to the state. And that's the plan.
Right now it is, because the state has to send to the federal government to get approval to increase the Medicaid payment.
So we're basically a pass-through entity for Medi-Cal reimbursement, and because of the district, all of a sudden, the feds recognize that as a, as a cost share of sorts. But if you guys coughed up your same money and didn't involve the county and just took it, took it on the thing you would, so basically, we're a pass-through that allows, here's the difference between other TIDs, they may have six digits, maybe even five digits in their annual budgets. Your proposal is literally almost $85 million over the five-year term. So whether it's a pass-through or not, whether we get 1% or not, I guess I'd like to see more meat and potatoes to the plan than we're just collecting the money and helping you pay off the state and hoping that you get some return on that investment. And I don't even see in the plan where you've calculated that ROI, you know, much less how, again, there's any actual improvements being done here other than survival. So I will ask County Council before we take a vote, whether this is legal under state law as presented, and I'll leave it at that.
The formation of the, this business improvement, the BID Business Improvement District is certainly up to your board. As Mr. Rickelman stated, what's before your board today is a resolution of intent to form a district. The details, additional details to the actual formation will come out of the public hearing, any protests that may arise from that, as well as the resolution of formation. Those are the subsequent steps here. As far as whether or not this can even be brought before your board, or whether it's prohibitively banned from being heard from your board under the Streets and Highways Code, under those set of procedures, it can be presented for, to your board as a resolution of intent for your board's consideration.
Supervisor Simon?
Thank you.
I was thinking long-term, as we talk about the tribal nations here, 20,000 years of history, we're going forward also. I myself, many leaders, we need a tribal hospital here in Lake County, tribal-owned, tribally-operated, down the road. I don't know how this affects Ben, or if you had had any conversation with Lake County Tribal Health or anything, you know, I don't know, but we always want to be thinking about those things also, about the seven nations here. You know, I've been a big advocate, talking about it for years, we need a local tribal hospital, if we can have one. There's not one in California, you know, many other states, obviously, with tribes have those, we don't have that here. I don't know how that affects it down the road, but just thinking long-term, maybe it doesn't happen in my lifetime, but it's definitely needed. So just want to make sure in consideration of all communities, everything, not trying to put a stop to anything today, but thinking long-term, you know, that's where we're going. You know, I know we talked about Cultural Center, and I was involved in those conversations early on at the Anderson Marsh, and, you know, so we've gone away, but we'll come back, but a hospital is something that's much needed here for the tribal communities, just for our own folks, that's, when I have to go in for, that's where I would like to be, but we're not there yet. So just, just putting it out there, I don't know.
Yeah, so the district, by state law, can only be five years initially, it could then can be, future extensions can be 10 years, so this isn't set in stone for a long, long time. So it can be modified in the future for different participating entities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's basically following the same rules as we experienced with the TID, it was five years then, then now we just have a 10-year one. So it feels and sounds very familiar. I did have a couple more questions, and I appreciate you brought up the cost to the county, the, from the tax collector to the auditor controller. You mentioned 1%, but I do not see the 1%. Is that not going to be in this? Are we doing a separate MOU where there's an understanding of that 1% and it's separate from this? That this only impacts the idea of what the hospital improvement, I know it's not called that, it's, I want to say child, it's got all those letters, but this obviously creates, it says what the percentage is that will be assessed on both hospitals, the rest will be separate.
So I can-
Mr. Sullivan.
Patrick Sullivan, Lake County Treasurer Tax Collector. I can speak to some of that. I did have the opportunity to meet with everyone here, which I appreciate, and I addressed some of the initial concerns and questions that I had. The draft district plan, I believe, reflected that we would be able to bill for our costs. We actually agreed, kind of like how we do with the LCTID, that it would be better to have a flat rate. The LCTID actually has a higher rate, it's 2%, but because of the scale of this, 1% was determined to be more appropriate in terms of the county's cost. I mean, we, I still retain the concern that in the future with audits or, you know, some other unforeseen event that could come up, that those costs could be higher, but in discussions, should that situation ever arise, it was indicated that we could revisit that at the time. So as long as that capacity is there, I don't think I have too much concern. Compared to the LCTID, the mechanics of this are a lot more straightforward, we're only collecting from two entities that have indicated they voluntarily intend to pay. So that is sort of a different role for us in our office. If we're not having to take enforcement action or pursue anyone, that really limits the impact on our office. So considering that we're going to wait for federal and state approval before we distribute funds, you know, under the current plan, I think our office should be able to handle it, and our concerns have been addressed.
And I apologize, I may have missed it, but are you planning to do a separate MOU for what that looks like as far as getting the payment from the assessed amount to cover your costs and the auditor controller's costs?
Typically for these, you would want all of that reflected in the district plan. So the ultimate iteration of district plan should have all of that refined, that would be my perspective, but.
Okay.
How long would you anticipate holding those funds before they're sent?
So that may be a question for Adventist and Sutter up here. We would plan at this time on collecting on a quarterly basis. There has to be a reconciliation at the county level between the treasurer tax collector and the auditor controller before those funds can be dispersed. But before we can do that, we have to have the information about what payment is due, since this is reflecting that share, that contribution. We're going to need to figure out a mechanism to verify that, I mean, through both the hospitals and the state, and I am not completely clear on what that process will be yet.
So we can talk about what to do with the interest income?
That would probably be a point for discussion, yeah. Depending on how long it's, it's our account, there is the interest associated with that, and whether we're trying to break that out and include it in their balance, or whether we're retaining that, that is not presently addressed in the plan.
So this is not my first time saying this today, but did not get the chance to review my full agenda until I finished everything last night at about 11 o'clock. We're talking about the district plan, but the district plan is not attached to the attachment, and I feel that it needs to be in front of us before we say, yes, let's go out and solicit, I mean, granted, it feels like you're so undecided right now. We're obviously going to get two responses, and that's what we're looking for, for this end vote 45 days later, but I also don't see the details of the plan, and it speaks to the plan, and I don't know if it was a missed exhibit or a missed attachment that was not connected, but I feel like there's some details in there that we're discussing today, which is great, but I feel that seeing it in writing, and that that's what will be attached if we approve something today, that that's important for us to have in front of us.
So I did have it as just electronic referral to the clerk. I used, I wanted to stay with previous resolution language, I've seen kind of similar with this PBID's formations, but I'm happy, the plan exists, I'm happy to post it and send it right away.
Okay. And then we will come back, and we still have to make a final decision, and I think that having that in front of us as soon as possible is going to be important, especially we're talking about the 1%. That means we're actually stuck with those things, but I think it's important for it to be there. Just had a couple other quick questions. I appreciate the conversation with Lakeport, I think it's important that eventually, maybe five years down the road, if this goes forward, that we do have this countywide, there may not be a hospital in Lakeport, but if there's ever the opportunity to, it will treat everybody the same, so I, that's, that's what I'm thinking of for the future. And then in the whereas's, just a random thing I knew, I had seen it when I was reading it, it took me a while to find it, but in the second whereas, I'm not sure why it took me so long when it's the second one, it says licensed as general acute care hospitals. Are you identified as general acute care and not access, critical access hospitals? Is that the right terminology? Because it does say by the California Department of Public Health, so I don't know what their identification of you would be, but does that work, that it's general acute care and not general access, or critical access care hospital?
It does work, they're both, they're licensed as both, and so the specificity just comes from what you were referencing earlier about not wrapping in clinics and things like that.
Okay. All right. I'm out of questions at this moment in time, and I would think we're going to open it up for public comment.
Hi, Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. I don't think we have the pleasure of meeting, I met you several times. I have no objection to moving forward, certainly any revenue to expand healthcare in Lake County is welcome and critically needed, especially in the primary care space. What I am aware of is that in Lake County, there are significant behavioral health needs that have to be met in an acute setting. For example, ASAM Level 4 Detox, which is medically monitored detox, is something that we do not have in county, we're required to have that under the ODS waiver. And to date, there has not been very strong partnership with the hospital systems around behavioral health needs. Similarly, we have really extensive behavioral health needs that end up in the acute setting in the EDs. It's not ideal for anybody. We would love our people not to be in an ED and to have some other setting to go to for medical clearance to an acute psychiatric hospital, that doesn't exist. But my hope is that the board can keep an eye on the deliverables for this and ensure that those particular needs, as regards our county, we hold the hospital accountable too, and as much as we can, encourage them to participate in good faith with our needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment in the chamber? All right, let's go to Betsy Khan on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Green, I apologize, I did send an email to Supervisor Sabatier and Mr. Rickelman last evening, asking three specific questions about this proposal. I believe that your decision is, is, is too early, there are not, there are too many unknowns about how this will work, as you have discussed this afternoon. I have several questions that you can answer if you like. If you're already operating at a loss, where will the funds for the assessment- If you're already operating at a loss, where will the funds for the assessment come from? That doesn't make logical sense to me. And definitely, the item was presented on the agenda sponsored by the Administration Department as though the county was sponsoring this activity. The resolution makes it sound as though the county is sponsoring this activity, not the actual hospitals. And the need for things like monitoring delivery or monitoring the deliverables that Ms. Jones just spoke about is not specified in there. The plan is extremely vague. There is no list of actual projects and the plan itself says that the county may withdraw or use money in the account only for a purpose authorized in this plan. There are no purposes authorized. So this is really vague stuff. I think it's extremely important. We all do appreciate how essential these services are, that we could not survive without them. And the question as to the language about general acute care hospitals that also Ms. Jones referred to is extremely important. These are critical care hospitals. The loss of acute care services that are standard under the contract with the Red Bud Healthcare District by the Adventist Health Hospital in Clear Lake calls for the continuation of standard acute care services, but we do not have most of those. Definitely the seismic improvements and all that kind of stuff. That's something that's on your bill, not ours. So I really would ask the supervisors to pause, take that plan, look at what is missing, consider the questions that I asked, and consider answering those questions clearly and then explaining where the funding will come from, from the hospitals themselves if they're operating at a loss. Where will that money come from? Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to provide some answers to some of the questions. Mr. Rickelman?
Yeah, we can start. It is a little confusing with if they're assessing themselves, how are they getting more money back? And if counsel can explain that, that'd be appreciated.
Okay. Well, that's a cash flow issue. They're talking about cash flow, obviously, versus their net bottom line. They have to have money to pay their nurses, to pay their staff. They have cash. At the end of the year, when you add up all their expenses and all of their revenues, they're five and a half million dollars behind as of 2022. Is that what you're saying? So the cash comes out just like it pays anybody else. Any vendor that's in this room gets paid the same way. The state's just another vendor. The money comes back through the Medicaid program based on the number of Medi-Cal patients that they treat that are in the Medicaid Managed Care Plan that you and your county have a single Medicaid Managed Care Plan that runs. So we'll go to the Medicaid Managed Care Plan and then increase the payment to each Medi-Cal patient that shows up in the door. That will obviously increase the revenue that they'll receive. And that is the general plan to generate additional revenue so they can improve their facilities and improve the delivery of care in the community.
And just even a simpler high level, so if this assessment's roughly 15 million annually, they're going through this whole process because they'll get more back from the federal government. So on net, it's roughly two to one, would you say?
It's two to one as long as the state doesn't steal any.
So if they assess themselves 15, get 30 back, so on net, it would be 15. So that's why, you know, if the individual hospital's running a deficit, the overall Adventist and Sutter system supports it. But with this net increase, 30 minus 15, that's where you get the additional revenue when the process is complete.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think some of this has been explained. It's just healthcare is a rather confusing and difficult matter on how it processes and it constantly changes as well. So what you understood two years ago is completely different. And even now, we have on the ballot more things to change how Medi-Cal interacts with our local hospitals. And so it's a moving target. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. I would like to add a comment to where the cash is coming from. So and if I can use the analogy of a child in college that's not paying their bills and you send them money to loan them to get through, what's happening now is Sutter and Adventist is sending us money to keep us open in that sense. So when we're five and a half million dollars short, Sutter is sending that money in to keep the hospital open and keep us viable. And I'm assuming that Adventist is doing the same thing on that. So it's mom and dad are sending money down to keep us viable. And people that have heard me talk in the community, you've heard me talk about to grow in the community, we need to stand on our feet and be viable as much as we can, then I can get resources to do more in the community currently. And you have to say, when your kid wants a great birthday present, but you just sent him $2,000 to fix their car, you kind of want to say, that's your birthday present you just got. And that's what kind of, you know, I don't mean to trivialize it this much, but that's kind of what it is. When I go to Sutter and say, I need five and a half million dollars to open a clinic in Hidden Valley Lake, they're like, but we just gave you five and a half million dollars to stay open. So then we shortchange the community in that sense. So we are working really hard to be viable and to stand on our feet, just like your college student is, so we can do more in, you know, for our community in a sense. Very simplistic in that, but that's an honest analogy of what's happening currently on that for Sutter.
Okay. And I think that was a response to all of the questions that we did receive from Ms. Khan. Just a quick question, and I'm going to bring it back. I'm going to close public comment. Not sure if it has to be implemented in this or if it's just something we can request, but it would be nice to have an annual report to us to let us know how this is being utilized for the community so that we can really visualize and see the actual community benefit that's coming from this system. And that will give us a better footing five years down the road of how we're going to make a decision if this is something we absolutely did not like and it did not benefit us whatsoever or absolutely look what we've gained from doing things like this. And so I think that's, again, I don't know if it needs to be within this document before we approve it and put it out for a vote or if it's just something that we can coordinate between one another, because I don't know that you're going anywhere at this moment in time that I'm aware of. So you'll still be here where we can find you.
So we're not approving a management plan today. There's just a draft one. All we're doing is passing a resolution of intention to start the process, so.
But I think it's important to know what we're passing to request people to review and if it needs to be changed so that it might be more palatable than, that's my question.
We would be very happy to provide an annual report.
Yeah, we've generally copied the business improvement district, so it was familiar to you guys. So that's why it looks very much like the business or the tourism district. But we can add anything specific that we want into the plan, whether you want a plan and MOU is all the same to us. Plan is a great place to put it. When it comes to costs, the law does allow you to recover your reasonable costs. So if the 1% isn't enough, then it would be more. They would just say, that doesn't cover our costs. If it was too much, in theory, they'd tell us that as well, but we think it'll be all right.
Okay.
But you should not end up, you will not end up negative. That's the guarantee the hospitals will make under any circumstance when it comes to the costs of the county putting stuff together.
Okay. I would like to propose that between, it's on page three? Yeah, page three, between where it says the proposed LCHID will have a five-year term beginning blah, blah, blah through June 30th, 2029, unless renewed pursuant to Streets and Highways Code 3660 period, that there's a new paragraph that says the LCHID will provide a summary report of benefits to hospitals and community based on the revenues received.
Were we including the behavioral health concerns as well or is that for something different or later?
I think those are stronger conversations about, just because those are complex issues that do need to be discussed 100%. I absolutely support her comments. Those are difficulties that the hospitals are dealing with, but I don't know that we can put it in this. That's my personal opinion on that.
I mean, do we need to add it to this resolution or can we just put it in the MOU?
In the management plan?
In the management plan.
I think it would make more sense to put it in the management.
Okay, okay. I would like to see that in the management plan. Since we closed public comment and if there's nothing further, looking for action. Yes, CAO Parker?
Yes, could you please instruct, Johanna? Yes, please.
Can we please project Exhibit A on the share screen? This shows the map of what the district would look like. It's a very quick and simple map, but at least it would let everybody know what Exhibit A is. Obviously, it would be the entire county with also approval from the city of Clear Lake and Lakeport would be cut out at this moment in time. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
I have a question. Do we need like a date that we're scheduling?
It says 45 days later. If we can create a date that would work out.
Are we scheduling like a Tuesday or Thursday?
Yes.
So the next scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting with the 45-day buffer is November 5th.
That's not 45 days. Oh, November 5th, sorry, I heard October 5th in my mind. Okay. Definitely more than enough time for those 45 days, yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
No.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye. Okay, do we need, County Council, do we need to specify a date of when public hearing will be or that's separate?
No, eventually, the, well, only in reference to the blank space, blank portions of the resolution that's been adopted.
Gotcha.
That would need to be filled out, but that can be handled by staff internally for, within compliance with that 45-day requirement.
Okay. So we will see each other again on November 5th, it appears. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. And just, I do want to respond, I apologize, there was a comment. This is a conversation that was brought to the county. This was not, we typically, and I've gotten upset about this before, nobody from the outside should be able to just place something on the agenda. They usually will work with a department head. Here, they worked with CAO Parker and her team and her staff and they were interested in sharing this with the Board of Supervisors. If you want to see that as a sponsorship, that this was ours, that we created, that's an opinion you may have. But I know that I had a discussion with both hospitals prior to it going to the CAO and these are things that we need to discuss. There's potential benefits to the community, so I appreciate your administrative staff and yourself working on this and bringing this to our attention. So I see no problems in that pathway. I think it's actually the better pathway than just letting anyone sponsor something from the outside of county on our agenda. Thank you all very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a quick 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 3:15.
Oh, man.
All right, welcome back. We are going to take up our, we're going to start out actually with 5.4, I believe, is the number. And that was for behavioral health, and then we're going to go through the untimed items for. Okay, we'll get to the water resources one as well. Approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement between County of Lake and Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for After Hours Crisis Support Services in the amount of $90,200 for fiscal year 2324 and authorize the Chair to sign. Another apology, I am being slightly picky on this one in the sense that we are increasing the amount again, this time by $800. What's happening this time is there is a payment term of 4.1, which is not to exceed 751676, but number one, that's wrong if you divide that number by 12. But number two, how do you pay for something that you increase partially through and divide it by 12 when it's probably the first six or eight months, it's a certain number, and after that, I just, I don't want the auditor controller to tell you you can't spend the money that you're actually trying to spend. So I don't know if that needs to be increased by more for the last month, so you can pay off that last month. I'd like to get your feedback on that, just to make sure that we can leave you with the right contract that the auditor controller will approve of the check that is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always appreciative for your analysis, and I think we should bring it back. I think we should bring it back and address that. I think that was a very astute observation.
Okay, thank you very much. And if there's any further comments regarding that? And I will open it up for public comment. I see no hands in the Zoom room, no movement in the chamber. All right, so that will come back at a later time. Then we'll move on to 7.2, I believe. Consideration of Amendment Number Three to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $414,300 for fiscal year 2324. Director Jones.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. This, in a perfect world, especially for a single fiscal year contracts, we would love to never, I would not love, I don't like amendments, I'm not a fan, right? We love to have a good projection, and we keep with our projection, and that's never needed. Obviously, we're at our third amendment here. We are, I just want to acknowledge some fiscal tracking and projection data analysis tools that we're putting into play to better project our contract maximum moving forward into 2425 to avoid having to come before the Board and the administrative burden associated with lots of amendments. That being said, the overall story here is that our project, our use continued to exceed our projections. We have at present fifty-five people on LPS conservatorship. That was about a week ago. Maybe it's changed a little bit, I don't know. Why is that important? Because Vista Pacifica is one of the facilities where a lot of those folks are placed. They also operate a skilled nursing facility, so if you have comorbid, like you have dialysis, or you have a kidney failure and you need dialysis, you can't just go to any place. If you have also, if you're also on mental health conservatorship, you have to go to a facility that can handle your behavioral health needs as well as significant health needs. So that is, the driver for these amendments is poor projection of actual utilization, and we're tightening up that process.
In other words, greater use of the services that are being made available is the way that I look at it.
I appreciate that frame.
And I hope that, I know we've been dealing with a specific issue. I hope that they're able to take dual diagnosis, because I know that's one of the kind of barriers that we're hitting is these agencies sometimes can't take some of the more extreme situations that we have to deal with. So I'm hopeful. Opening up for any questions or comments?
Just super quick question on the prediction. I'm going to guess there's a balancing act between whatever your real estimate is and what you hope to get by the Board at any given time. Without outing yourself, is there any tendency for people, when they're doing these contracts, to lowball them, if only to avoid sticker shock when they come to the Board level? The simpler fix would be just bring me a contract not to exceed $500,000, and then I can almost guarantee there'll be no need to come back. But this fine tuning, how do you fine tune the process along the way?
That's a great question. You know, ever since I've had to bring contracts for $10 million for one contractor before the Board, I think that's all the sticker shock we are, so this is peanuts, you know, you're very much less. What, I think what it more accurately reflects is not that issue, but also balancing our actual budget. Because when we allocate certain dollar amount to a contract, we have to balance it everywhere else because there's almost, there's finite amount of money for a budget. And so whenever we increase one contract, theoretically, we're also decreasing other ones, so that's also kind of a balancing act that we're in. I actually think that that issue is going to remediate somewhat when we have more of our cash flow issues fixed, because we'll have enough buffer to have a nice padding on a, I hate to, but to have it in case of it exceeds, to not have to be as conservative, because we're to the penny of tracking it and balancing a budget. Does that make any kind of sense? It's more about a cash flow thing than it is about it in a budgetary thing with balancing all of our contracts. And it is, how are we going to get under a certain dollar amount? Because if it's under $100,000, does it anything, you know, we're going to have to talk about.
It does make some sense, but also makes sense to, in the way I was brought up. Always ask for maybe a little more than you might actually need to live with, because there's an off chance you may have to get a lesser amount, so.
There's been a learning curve for staff as well.
I'm just going to reiterate that you got to stay within a budget, and that's always the difficulty is we have to make a guesstimate every single year when we do our budget as to what the total amount of contracted services will be. And so padding it so much kind of makes restrictions, and then we'll force amendments going in the opposite direction.
As happened as well.
And so I think that it is what it is. I think there is some learning to happen. But hey, if there's more use of it, then that's not a bad thing. And then we get used to it, and we can get a little bit closer for the next try. If there's nothing further, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I see no hands in the Zoom room and no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
I have the right one. Move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential.
Number Three. Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three? Am I looking at the wrong title?
Seven point two.
The title says Amendment Number One, so, and the recommended action says Number One. So I will assume that's a clerical error, and I'll move for approval of Amendment Number Three.
Yeah. It does say one if you open up the memo, but we'll do Amendment Number Three.
Except now I need the total, because, oh, it is going to be four fourteen three. Okay, so move to approve Amendment Number Three to the Agreement between County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises, Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount total not to exceed $414,300 for fiscal year 202324 and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point three.
Can I back, was that twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, because we're finishing up the previous year.
Thank you.
That's why there's the Third Amendment.
Appreciate it.
Seven point three, Consideration of Agreement between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization in the amount of $900,000 for fiscal year 2425. Director Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Board. This one does come with some sticker shock. This is a contract in nearly a million dollars, $900,000. Our work with North Valley Behavioral Health has, our partnership has existed for many years. This continues to expand, because they are really building program to support people who are deemed incompetent to stand trial and participate in the competency restoration process through one of their many facilities. I've visited their campus, actually, just a couple of months ago. These are beautiful top, you would feel very comfortable, I, let me, I'll feel very comfortable if I or my family members had to go there. So just want you to be aware that we're also viewing all of these facilities and making sure that the services that we're paying for are quality, and we feel good about it. But we, this is a very niche need, and they're really capitalizing on that and building program to support our need, and we're very grateful for that partnership.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I actually thought it was more before in the past for previous contracts, but we'll pass on that. Opening up for public comment? I see no hands up in the Zoom room, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve agreement between County of Lake and North Valley Behavioral Health for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization in the amount of $900,000 for fiscal year 24 and 25 and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point four. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services. That is not Amendment Number One, that is Amendment Number Three. For the Lake County Wrap Program Foster Care Program and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $5,700,000 for fiscal years 2223, 2324, and 2425. Director Jones, this one is the sticker shock.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair, and this, it's important to note that contract maximum reflects all three years of service. So this amendment, when we have multi-years, it's often the case that we amend each beginning of, near the beginning of the fiscal year to say, okay, what are we going to have for this fiscal year is our projection? So we've established that with Redwood Community Services. And one of the important things to note in their contract that we originally initiated back in 2223 was a requirement for them to expand their service provision in South County, primarily the city of Clear Lake. primarily the city of Clear Lake. So I'm happy to report that they finally secured a brick-and-mortar facility on Lake Shore Drive in Clear Lake and will be serving youth, which is great, because they only had the Harbor-on-Maine here as one of their service sites, and so clinicians would have to drive from Lakeport to Clear, you know, everywhere. So very happy that they're making that commitment and expanding their services to youth. And so this will carry us out through the close of the fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Let's open it up for public comment. Any comments? Anyone wish to speak on this? I see no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number Three to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services Incorporated for the Lake County Wrap Program Foster Care Program and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Special, Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount of $5,700,000 for Fiscal Years 2223, 2324, and 2425, and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good catch, by the way. I didn't catch that one right away either. 7.5, Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Conacti Senior Support Incorporated for Senior Support Counseling Services in the Amount of $360,249 for Fiscal Years 23 through 26. Director Jones.
Yes, thank you. Conacti Senior Support works with us and receives Mental Services Act funding to have other seniors who want to go out in the community and wrap services and friendship around seniors in their communities. So it's a great program. What we've done with this amendment, of course, is update the contract amount, but also clarify, I believe, the invoicing processes. We're really tightening up across the board on all of our contracts. It's just continual sophistication on our end of making sure that we pay for things that are happening. So that's part of that, which is great, and just, this is just a contract in line with the previously approved MHSA plan.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Let's open it up for public. Any comments or questions from the public? Anyone wish to speak on this item? No movement in the chamber, no hands up in Zoom. Back to the Board for action.
All right. Mr. Chair, I approve. Now, is this one, we got to change the number on this one, too?
Number one.
All right, excellent. Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Conacti Senior Support, Inc., for Senior Support Counseling Services in the Amount of $360,249 for Fiscal Years 23 through 26, and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to jump back to our consent agenda item, 5.15. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, approve the award of bid number 25-0693 for 2024 Levy Patrol Road Gravel Repair Project in Upper Lake, California, between Lake County Watershed Protection District and Coleman Construction, LLC, in the Amount of $163,812.64, and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement. And Vice Chair Crandall, you pulled this item.
Yes, so this project is, of course, it's highly needed. It's been brought up in the town hall, West Region Town Hall, for quite some time. Excited to see it come to the Board, but there's also been some concerns by the Habemetal Tribal Historic Preservation Officer about some discussion. And I think a lot of this is just having, just the new communicate, communication situation with our new director, and then it coming from the previous Water Resources Director, and so trying to get on the same page here with that. And I know that there's been some emails that I've received about concerns with specifications for the plan of what's going on, so that the tribe can determine what and who they need for monitoring, and then also a plan for the cultural resources, if found, where they would go from there. And I think there might be something else if I'm missing it. I think Mr. Gary's here, he can explain some of the concerns. But I think, I mean, I really feel like we can move forward and address some of these concerns. I really would like to see this happen for the Upper Lake community, but also for the Upper Lake Tribe to have their concerns met as well. It's very important to me. So I just wanted to pull it and see if we can have that discussion.
Okay. Any comments or questions from Board members? I want to make sure and get a better understanding, maybe, of some of the concerns, if Mr. Gary would like to come up and talk.
How could they might, oh, could they kept till we can, Robert Gary, how could, hello, today? My name is Robert Gary. I'm the Director of Cultural Resources and the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake. We were talking about the levy maintenance projects, I think, that are, you know, taken on by, you know, the Water Resources Department here. I got an informal email about a project where the initial details were, well, not details, but the initial work for it was to remove sediment for flood control. And so, and that was in, that was actually on June 5th. At that same, on the same day, I requested more details. The email that I got was asking for, to set up, you know, to, we want to, you know, talk about having a monitor out there on site. I asked for more details, because I needed to know, like, what all, you know, was going to take place during this project, what was going to happen. I didn't get any details as far as with what I was requesting. I was also told that there was a categorical exemption for this project that was issued by Fish and Wildlife back in 2022. I asked for a copy of that. I got that, reviewed it, did some research with that. So in this categorical exemption, and mind you, SEQA AB52 was actually passed in 2014 with the, with adding another category for tribal cultural resources to be assessed in a sequent, in a SEQA assessment for any project. And so I researched a categorical exemption. Under this categorical exemption, there were 22 waterways that were a part of this project where this levy maintenance was going to happen. After, you know, looking at, you know, tribal cultural resources, archaeological resources that are registered with the state, out of the 22, 21, 21 of those waterways, which ranged from all the way up, the north part of the Clear, in Clear Lake, all the way down to, to, two waterways, I believe, down in Middletown. Out of the 22, 21 of them actually went through prehistoric sites or had sites that were literally on the banks of these waterways. I had this conversation with the issuing agency, which was Fish and Wildlife, about those concerns. They said that they needed to, you know, look at and review that categorical exemption determination for the fact that it was missing a lot with that assessment. And so that's kind of like in the process now. I initially got, like I said, an informal notification, it was just an email, that there was this project that was coming down, and they wanted to work out monitors from, you know, Lake County Water Resources. Not getting the details, not getting specifics to, you know, some of the things I, you know, addressed my concerns. I also inquired about tribal consultation. After we were told about the categorical exemption, I informed the Water Resources Department that there are exceptions to the exemptions for SEQA when tribal cultural resources, you know, are, are a concern, and those are what I brought. So June 5th is when I inquired about tribal consultation. I didn't get anything back from Water Resources until August 6th, wanting to schedule a tribal consultation. In that consultation, we had not just Water Resources there, we also had Fish and Wildlife, who issued the permit that was there. We also had Department of Water Resources that were there. At this consultation, Fish and Wildlife informed everyone that because there were some things that were missed in the initial assessment for that categorical exemption, that they wanted to review it. That we also brought to the table concerns for known TCRs that were going to be impacted by this project. We wanted to get more details, more information, because up from June, all the way until then, we didn't get specifics. And so our concern was that, first of all, that there were too many holes in this whole, you know, project, and informing, I think, of, you know, the Water Resource Department, that all the tribes would have to really kind of take a look at this as well, because it's, the categorical exemption determination really wasn't adequate. These were known tribal cultural resources that were going to be impacted. The tribe is not against, you know, levy repair or levy maintenance. You know, Habemetal is definitely going to benefit from that as well, but it shouldn't be at the tribe's tribal, tribal cultural resources. And so we just wanted to mitigate and make sure that there was a plan set in place. So as of August, we started with ongoing consultation regarding this. We still are in consultation, according to the tribe, because there was no mitigation measures that were set up. We're still waiting for the review of the Fish and Wildlife to the categorical exemption from, and that consultation was on August 27th. On August 30th, there was a submission to the Planning Department here for a categorical exemption, which we didn't, was unbeknownst to us. We didn't know anything about that, and we didn't understand why, if it already had a categorical exemption. The only thing that I can come to is that Fish and Wildlife stated that there was possibility that it wouldn't meet the requirements for a categorical exemption, because of some of the things that were being brought to the table. And so I spoke with the planner here at Lake County. She was unaware or wasn't informed by Water Resources that we were in current consultation, so she actually retracted the notice of intent for exemption. She redacted that or retract that. So right now, she's saying, or Planning Department's saying, okay, we're going to let you guys figure this out, because there's already been one that's established through consultation. There should be some kind of mitigation measures to address the impacts to tribal cultural resources. So through this project, there's going to be impacts to slope deterioration that has happened. I've asked for details of, like, what does that entail? What does that look like? What's going to be the ground disturbance that's going to happen with that? There's also going to be scarification of the levies. I asked for any kind of historical information of how those levies were, were created. I haven't gotten those, that information yet. And then just known that because of those waterways and waterways move, they're literally going to go, and the erosion that happens with cultural resources, most of those resources are going to be in the sediment. So that's a big concern for us. So to be able to make sure that we have a plan, I asked if there was going to be an archaeologist or CRM firm that's going to be contracted if anything's found. Where can we put these as, as far as a reburial site? Those forms can only be submitted by an archaeologist. I was informed that, no, there was no archaeologist that was going to be contracted through this. I see, I seen on June 5th of this year, June 5th to June 6th, the Water Resource Department put out a notice for bid, which was, I believe, in the amount of 180, over 180 something thousand, specifically for this project for bid. And then I see for bid today, the award for it is 160, over 160. There's an amount remaining of 17, over 17,000. In consultation and on-site visit, we were, you know, the tribe was told, well, we have $2,000 this for you. And I said, well, without the details, I really can't tell you how long our monitor will be out there. 2,000 might be more than what I need. 2,000 might be less, I don't know. Without the details, I can't determine where we need to be and where we don't need to be. And those were some of the conversations that we've been kind of dealing with, as far as getting good communication and getting the things that we're asking for, to make sure that, you know, we have a detailed plan. If we find items, where are they going to go? If there's, you know, the ripping and the things, the ripping and the slope deterioration, because it's changed from the very first email that I received, it was, there was going to be sediment removal. From what I understand, now there's no sediment removal, but there is ground disturbance activities that are going to happen. And so with those ground disturbance activities, we just, you know, we requested that, hey, we want to make sure that we have somebody on site. There's not going to be an archaeologist that's there, from what I was, have been told so far. There's no archaeologist on site. TCRs that are there, there's no one there to move them, there's no one there to assess it, there's no one there to make sure that, you know, there's a reburial spot for the items. The tribes don't like taking those things back home. If we can put them back where we got them, or place them near a place where, you know, they're, they're, that they've been discovered, that's great for us, right? But if not, then, you know, there's has to be some, but there has to be mitigation. And so these are the concerns that we've been having from June 5th, like I said, asking about tribal consultation in June 5th. It shouldn't take all the way from June 5th to June, or August 6th, to get an answer back for consultation. Because it's exempt, that doesn't mean best practice-wise to be able to address that, those concerns with the tribe, if the tribe has concerns. We brought that to the August 27th consultation. We're currently in consultation. I'm not sure, the last email that I got, the VRF, which is a verification request form that needs to be filled out and submitted to Fish and Wildlife before any work can happen from on, on August, or some, I'm sorry, September 3rd, I was informed that that still hasn't been done. So I understand it's timely. I understand maintenance, levy maintenance is important. It's important to our community, community as well, but there also is the protection and preservation of the tribe's cultural resources. And so that's why, you know, we're here today.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask for Water Resources, now that we have an understanding here of what the concerns are, if you can provide some response.
So it's Pawan Upadiya, I'm the new Water Resources Director here. So I will say, like, I'm like, all for it, like, as far as the tribal culture resources is concerned, like, I totally understand that. But I think what Robert has mentioned here is like, is, he's mixing up, like, multiple projects, which we have in our department, so, which is like, basically the gravel removal as well as the levy maintenance. So these are like two separate works in itself. I think all the communication we have regarding the levy maintenance happened in, in or after July. So June and everything, that is like gravel removal, which might be more concerned, concern regarding as far as the tribal culture resources is concerned. But as far as this levy maintenance project goes, it's basically about bringing some more gravel and like putting on top of the existing levies. So it's like building up from there. And as far as our SEQA and other thing goes, that's why we are like exempt for it. Like, I'm still learning more about projects, so maybe I can't say like 100% what exactly is there, but as far as, like, I understand it, so we have like an exemption for the reason that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, they have already evaluated these impacts to the tribal culture resources, and they have determined through their process that there is no impact or no significant impact to the tribal culture resources. And if it's, it's otherwise, so I think that's the discussion between the agency which has given us, which is the Fish and Wildlife, that exemption. And that process, I don't know, like, it seems to be much more longer or like lengthier than the one which we have, because we are trying to get this project done, because I understand that it's been going on, or like for the community for the last couple of years. And we do have a timeline on that, like, October 15, I believe, is the hard timeline, like, where we can't work beyond that. So I'm trying to address, like, we, even, even though we are exempt, we do have a budget for like culture monitoring, and $2,000, I believe, was put in, in the initial planning phase. And if we need more, probably we can come up with like different sources or somewhere we can find it out. So, so that's why I think right now, what we have done is like, we separated our project. We are only doing the levy maintenance, nothing about the gravel removal. So, and whatever information we have at our office has been provided to Mr. Gary. So I don't know if we have anything more than what has already been provided. And as far as the specific detail of the project goes, that's up to the contractor, like, how, which equipment he going to use, like, how he going to approach it. But I think we can ask him that kind of information as well, once the project is awarded. And as far as the scale of project goes, because it's a relatively smaller project compared to, like, as far as construction goes, so I think for mostly these type of projects, there is not like a very detailed planning of what gonna, I think as far as the contractor gets that project, we can ask him more specific information on day-to-day basis.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so just for clarification, within this specific project that would be approved today, there is no excavation that will be done? That's a separate project? This is more of bringing in material potentially or fixing the, doing the repairs to the levy?
Yes, I think that's what the, basically, these are, like, to bring extra material and to have the compacted.
We're going to rip.
Yeah, okay.
Would you like to please come to the microphone?
Yeah. So I think they're So I think there is certain depth, like two or four inches.
Yeah, so what the project is going to do is it's going to actually take rip into the levy and, but no sediment, no soils are going to be removed. It's basically so that the new soils coming in can lock in. So it's a ripping and then a watering and a compacting and then more fill, more watering, more compacting until we meet our four inches is what we're looking for so that can be re-crend, is what it is. And so there will be no soils, no soil spoils. We're not even moving. We're just literally ripping it up to lock in the new soils.
And the depth again of the ripping?
About two inches. We're saying anywhere of two to six inches depending on the site.
Okay. And hence the SEQA exemption because of the depth of the ripping that's going on. And just a question, just kind of trying to remember some of the prior conversations, where is the other soils coming from that you are going to be utilizing to help rebuild?
And so where we just found out yesterday that from the contractor that it hasn't been awarded to yet, that he is going to be using soils that have been removed from the high school.
Okay. And what, is there a state process that if something is found during this process, that there are rules and regulations of what processes to follow, best practices of what to follow if cultural artifacts or cultural resources are found?
We would definitely call in the tribe.
Okay.
You know, they were going to be the, they're, they're the people who know better about their artifacts than we do. So if we do find anything, this is why we were talking to them, while SEQA exempts us from talking with them, they would know their resources better than we would. And so we do want to work with them regardless of having to consult or not. We do want to work with them. And so, you know, it's just a conversation that still needs to be had as to their resources, what they want to do with them, and we're okay with that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Water Resources, Vice Chair Randall?
And so, and so this is the award for that, for the, the group that you picked, the bid, right, Coleman? And they will be coming out with a plan that, that will be given back to you, or do they just start working after they're given this bid? How does that work?
And we've been talking to them a little, trying to get a little more information from them because of this process, because we usually just select the person and however they choose to get the work done is how we just roll with it. But we've been asked a lot more questions, so we've been trying to work with them to get those questions answered. And so they kind of tell us what they're doing, but they're not really too sure either. So they're going like, what is the best equipment to use? And so that kind of gets worked on. That's how we know that they're going to do the ripping with like a little machine thing that has like three little to rip it. I'm not a contractor here, I don't really know the, the technical terms for it. But that is what we've gotten from them so far.
Can I ask you a favor, if you can please give us your name?
Oh, Linda Rosas Bill.
Thank you. Obviously, they know of the criteria of what not to exceed with the equipment that they use. Then at that point, what kind of equipment they use is what they will tell you later on, like they know not to go 12 to 24 inches or anything like that?
Yeah, that would be unnecessary, and it's all part of the bid package.
Okay.
And so we've submitted the bid package to the tribe as well. Everything that we have documentation, we've given to the tribe so that they can see as well, you know, being truly transparent with everything that we have and going like, hey, this is a new process for us. We're not really too sure how this is supposed to work, but we're here to learn and grow with you. So, you know, we're going to try to learn together.
And I will assume that at this moment in time, within the area where the project is, that there is no previously identified cultural artifacts at this moment in time? It would be things that may be found if by chance that is the case?
Right, they would be inadverting finds because, yeah. And those, we have three sections that we're working on, and so we are unaware of anything that is currently there. So anything we find would be, you know, something that we came up on an accident.
When was the last time this was done on the levees?
I want to say the last project was 2018.
Okay. And did they go through that process then as well? Was it similar?
I'm not 100% sure. It wasn't in the department, so I'm not sure what the process was at the time.
Okay.
Any further questions for Supervisor Green?
Yeah. So it sounds like you guys proceeded under a CADDX, so there wasn't any special thing through community development for a grading permit or something like that that would have its own SEQA process baked in? That said, looking at the encroachment permit issued by the state to the Watershed Protection District, and that's on page 113 of 129 of that big long document. Prior to performing work, permitee must provide the department, the state, proof of notification and consultation, not just with Habemotol, but also Robinson, Scotch Valley Band, and Yokohdehi Windtoon Nation. Have there been notifications made at least to all those tribes?
Yep. We, so I have only been a part of this project for about a month and a half. And so when we met with Caltrans, they had stated that we needed to do that. And I asked about it, if it was done prior, and they had said no, so we went and we did send out those letters.
I'm a little uncomfortable with this, I'll be very clear. Number one, the window of work is closing rapidly mid-October. So even if we approve this today, the idea that they're going to go in there and do a really diligent job on short notice, assuming they're ready to activate tomorrow, it's not self-evident to me. Number two, this seems like a teachable moment where although it will probably cost us this season to conduct this repair, if we do show an abundance of caution, I'm all about that abundance of caution. This may be a fairly standard project, and there may be such a limited amount of potential disturbance that we can take some confidence in the, in the initial CADDX finding. But I've heard, if I've heard that the CDD had some questions about it, or if the state itself has some questions about it, absolutely no need to rush into this. The fact that it is a project that has limited potential for disturbance, but has not been subject to that greater grading use permit or other, other type of SEQA proceedings, didn't give us a opportunity to consider the potential for disturbance, didn't allow the notice tribes to really deep dive into that, and didn't allow, didn't give us the opportunity to reach an agreement with the tribes about exactly what type of tribal monitoring may be needed depending on the scope of work being, being conducted. So I know there's a need for speed, and I know there's a need to keep our levees repaired and all that, but we also need to maintain our good relationships with our tribal nations and especially when they show an interest, especially when they respond and show an interest to do a deep dive into these issues. I think we should be very prudent and acknowledge those, those interests, if only to avoid some potential down the road if we don't do things right. I know there was a CADDX here in the city of Lakeport for a very simple cut along a sidewalk, and I had a question, where's, you know, should there be tribal monitoring, should there not? And, you know, I don't want to like burden the city with a comparison here, but I do think overall, I have heard more than once, between AB 52 and other processes, we do need to educate ourselves as a county and a watershed district to the level of consultation that is needed. And I think this is a condition where you have both a short timeline and you do have some questions about whether this particular SEQA finding is appropriate. You know, slowing, slowing the pace of this project, to me, would be appropriate, but it's in your district supervisor, so I'll kind of listen to you on that.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. So always looking for solutions, even coming from the tribal side as we move forward and do these projects. What I've heard today is there are funds for a tribal monitor to be on the project. What I would like to do is move forward with the project, you know, as we move forward. That's what our monitoring agreements are for. We're not looking for anyone else to know what we know as tribal nations in our area. I did hear you say there's only $2,000, it may be more than that. And I heard a little bit of a follow-up comment, there, there may be some other funds or an opportunity to look at different things if that comes up. My thought is, I think as diligence, that getting something in, in place on this project with Habemotol is really important, but it sounds like we have some. I even heard Robert, when you stood up, said, once the evaluation happens, and I'm looking at just some of the jobs, it says levy and slope and bankmate repair and build up subgrade .3 miles. So they've got kind of the areas worked out. I think getting the agreement in place and then relying and working together on each other is the best way to move forward. I don't think we need to slow the project down. I think what we need to do is involve the tribe from the beginning. That's what helps the project move forward. Communication always needs to be improved. I heard from your comments, I heard that you're learning as the new resource director, having seven nations, even heard a gentleman here speak about the museum, 20,000 years, we were everywhere. So don't matter if you're moving dirt from one place to the other, just having those eyes on site is the most important thing. I'm hoping we can come together on this one and use it as a teaching moment, but I'm prepared to move forward as long as we get a commitment that that agreement, monitoring agreement gets put in place and we can move on from there. Other issues might come up with different projects that were brought up here, but I think we can work together on that. And those, those are my thoughts. You can, both groups can let me know what you think about that, but I think having those, can't tell you the importance of monitoring agreements. We've all been through them as tribal nations, categorical exemptions, whether it's Caltrans, PEGNE, other things, you say, listen, we're not trying to stop anything, but if we can be out there in the beginning and see something to help move the project forward, can happen because many a times we've not been on the project, then we get the call. And now we start the whole process over again, and that doesn't benefit anybody, doesn't benefit the community that needs this work done because we've heard it for years sitting here on the levy improvement projects. That's my suggestion today, and I hope we could walk away with that. But hearing your points loudly on communication, it's really important. It is important. And, you know, we try to respond as governments and as tribal nations, when we get these letters, it's important to us, we try and get back as soon as possible. Four tribes went out there, one have stepped up to do this because that's the area, Yokohdehi's reaching real far. I always have a problem with that, but, but anyway, that's another conversation. So as we move forward, that's my suggestion. We move forward, if we can do an agreement, I think that's the way to start, and then we'll all learn from this process. So that's a solution I would like to offer to the board if it's amenable between the two parties here.
And let's, let's finish with any comments from the board. Any further comments? Okay, please come on up.
They can sign the monitoring agreement as, as they move forward. I, I, many of these small projects have come up. I don't know if everything goes in front of the board, but cultural monitoring should be a part of that. There should be a cost on each one of these as you're moving forward, and it sounds like there is.
Right, and, and that's exactly what we brought to consultation. Like I said, the initial, I guess, notice for some type of levy project, and this is what we asked for in consultation, just to better understand it and to get clarification, give me a list of all the levy projects that are incorporated under this categorical exemption or that needs to happen. Give me timelines and details of what's going to happen. Even here, we're talking about the levees that just were going to be scarred. That's not totally true because there's also, and you read it, that there's a slope, deterioration slope work that's also going to take on ground disturbance activities. So there's that part of it that's there. One of the things that I asked for, and a lot of people don't understand this, is that I asked for, how was this, or give me any kind of historical data on how these things were constructed. Usually historically, they take, you know, the kind of the big arm and they kind of pull everything back from the center. And, and a lot of work that has happened throughout California, they find TCRs all in the levy when they start doing either a levy setback or a removal. Sometimes even ancestral remains because for some tribes, that's how they bury literally along the thing. So that's why I was asking, like let me know exactly what that looks like, and I couldn't get it. And so any work that happens on that levy, I'm concerned because if that was the method that was used here, which no one could provide to me, then you know what, I want to make sure that I have somebody out there. So initially in our consultation, it went down one foot, or we were talking one foot, and then we ended up finding out there that where they were going to go down, no, I'm sorry, one inch. Then we ended up finding that it's going to go six inches, so half a foot down. And then this, like I said, the deterioration of, of the slope, the disturbance of that. So I just, you know, there's a lot of concerns that I have here, and like you're saying, I think, now we're just making sure that we have a monitor onsite, making sure that there's foresight for when, anytime that there's anything that's found, we have an archaeologist. An archaeologist is the only one that can submit a DPR form to the state to make sure that there's, that this is registered. And then to make sure that whatever that reburial site that is, that that's registered with the state, that any kind of future work that happens, that that's going to pop up upon any, any other initial study. And so I just wanted to say also, in 2018, there was an initial study was for the project of levy maintenance that was contracted through Mr. Sealy that was there on, on Middle Creek. Tribal cultural resources, and mind you, SEQA had passed in 2014, you know, the AB 52. 2018, then the initial study that happened in Middle Creek didn't involve or didn't assess cultural resources or tribal cultural resources in that 2018 study. So with that said also, is with this categorical exemption, the agency itself said that there were things missed in this exemption determination and that they needed to review it and update it. So it doesn't have it currently of like what it is, where it's at. They're still reviewing that.
So I'm always like to be very clear or not. I asked you and you said, yeah.
Yes.
Monitoring agreement is the most important thing.
Right.
Because there's a lot of unknowns at this point, so. I think we've heard from at least one or more of the board members, we're ready to move forward, and we want to make sure we're doing that together.
Yeah, and we just, and I, I'm there as far as for what we're concerned about, but just also making sure as far as the full process, is there an archaeologist that's going to be a part of this process to do reburials? Those are the things that, none of that is a part of the mitigation. We just started, you know, consultation about this. We haven't even gotten to that yet. And so, you know, it seems like there's an issue of cost here. That's what's been thrown out. It's like, well, here, this is what the tribe has to, this is what we got for you. And it's like, I can't assess this because I don't know the details. You haven't given that to me. So like here today, it was just the scarifying. It wasn't the slope work that has to be done. So I just.
All right, so, okay, you're not very clear either.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys want a monitoring agreement so we can.
No, we, yeah, we, if we can, yeah, if we can set one up, that'd be great on, on that, on, on that part of it, so we'd have somebody that's out there.
This is what's here today on this one, you know, and I understand you brought up other issues with other projects that may go on or this categorical exemption, but today we're talking about this project, and that's what I'm trying to address. Okay.
Supervisor Green?
If I can just reinforce that, because I, I hear where they're going on this. Clearly, it would be better if you had more time to analyze it, but at the end of the day, regardless of the project, a simple project like this or some huge thing that went through an initial study and a mitigated, like that, or full blue and EIR. At the end of the day, there are what called standard project conditions of approval, and tribal monitoring would be one of those in anything, again, whether it was a, a simple thing that raised some areas of concern or the initial SEQA finding was somehow suspect or, or just a larger project that we knew going in needed hands-on. That standard condition project of approval would be tribal monitoring onsite during construction, right? And so any of the doubts that you may have going into this, the ultimate fix at the end of the day, regardless of the type of project, that standard agreement would be, let's get some tribal monitoring out there. Is that correct? So other than where the money is going to come from and all that, sounds like there may be agreement through the party to just do that in this case. And on that basis, if there is that kind of shared agreement, I don't know how we lock it in within the four corners of the contract before us, but if we can get assurances on that, then we can probably move forward as, as long as we all understand that tribal monitor is the thing in this case and we can't, we can't cure the defects of not having all the bells and whistles on your preliminary analysis, but if we do let this contract today, at least having a tribal monitor onsite would be agreeable. Okay.
Vice Chair Randall?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we went through this before in another situation, not exactly the same, but when we had the situation with Lacerne Harbor, we ended up, it, I think it was a categorical exemption as well at the time, and then, but it was a totally different situation as we were doing a dredging project. And then we went around and found out that there was, it was an actual site. And so I think the planner, I don't remember the, I want to say the wrong name. Yeah, Tracy had went back and found out that it was a site. And so going through it, we ended up doing the whole situation again for SEQA and got through it, and there ended up being a, an actual artifact. And so one of the things about the levees, but just giving that example, but we were actually able to get the group, the tribes out there and talk with staff, and then not only that, Dr. Parker was there as well to talk about some of the, some of the practices. And so then going through these processes with the community, talking to them about these resources, tribal resources and whatnot. And so now here we are, almost there with that project. But then. But then, it was also mentioned about the levies, and I know that that was mentioned in Middle Creek Restoration, that back when they made those, of course, in the twenties or thirties or whatever, they pushed those levies that more than likely had artifacts in there. I think this one was built in, what, the sixties or fifties? But then, you know, there's been continuous maintenance on it. And so, I was glad to hear the history on it and whatnot. I think with everything we've talked about, knowing now that when we move forward with anything that has to do with something in a tribal area, you know, because I know that with Robinson, they're going to defer to have MSL in that situation. But anytime there is, we know that right off the get, we have to figure out these things right up front so that we're not, we're not here at this, you know, this predicament now, if that makes any sense. But I don't fault Water Resources, because I know there's been a lot of turnover, there's been a lot of staff and things like that that's taken place. So I know that we're going to get there. I feel like we can get there. I'm hoping that we can move forward today and everyone can feel like they're being heard and that they can, like the tribe can feel like they have a path forward and can actually be, you know, you know, I guess, what's the word I'm looking for? They can have what they need to make sure that whatever's found can be put to rest or identified. Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments on this? So, my struggle, if Fish and Wildlife came back with a different outcome, I think that this conversation would absolutely, there wouldn't even be a choice. Because at that point, SEQA is initiated, within SEQA is AB-52. This is in addition to something that by law does not require consultation if it's exempt. We can have consultation, and it looks like that we are. I don't know if it's over. I know I heard from one party saying that they feel it's not over, but they're being told it's over. But unless there's a project that requires the SEQA process to be fulfilled, it's not a requirement. And I may, I may offend some people with this, but history is history. Whatever we find that is historical, I'm just going to leave it at that, should be respected in any way possible, no matter whose history it is that we're digging up. And there's potential to dig up different types of histories. And I think that no matter what it is that we potentially accidentally dig up, the same respect would be given to pause, let's reschedule and relook at what needs to happen with what was found. But if we start adding with, under SEQA exempt projects, cost to each project, when I know that we have limited resources for our water resources, which is direly in need to get these projects completed to keep towns, to keep our waterways clean and safe from flooding, then we're going to start limiting what can be done. And so I feel like we have laws in place that says, hey, we're going to be able to pause here and be able to have another conversation when this occurs. But if we start initiating something that by law does not require us to initiate, I just feel like we're adding a level that now limits how much projects we can actually get done, that people are waiting for us to get done. So, I think there's, I don't know, I just, to me, it's easy to say, yes, let's just throw money at it, but then we're begging for money on the other side, trying to figure out how it is that we can get things accomplished. And I have Water Resources who has approached this in the first place, saying it's SEQA exempt currently, and that there's nothing to show that there should be any issues. And if there is, there are state laws to follow. And at that point, the right folks will be called, including an archaeologist, in order to respect those findings. That's the way that I would like to move forward, because that to me is following the law instead of setting a new precedent where that's kind of the expected way to follow at later times. If we know 100% that something's there, there's already something different. But that's not the case, that's why I asked the question. So that's, that's just my comments. Oh, thank you. Wasn't even looking in that direction. Director Turner, I see your hand up, or now I see your hand up.
Thank you. I can't quite start my video, but hopefully this isn't like too much extra knowledge since it sounds like your conversation is moving forward. But in the Community Development Department, we have instituted processes to make sure that we are not overlooking possible exceptions to categorical exemptions. The California Environmental Quality Act does have a number of possible categorical exemptions. However, there are five reasons why those categorical exemptions may not apply to any given project. And one of those is cultural resources. And so, we, for all of our discretionary permits, not ministerial like building a house, but for discretionary permits, we send our requests for review as a courtesy out to the tribes to give them the opportunity to reach out to us and say, we have a reason to think that this does not qualify for that exemption due to what we know that's out there, we need a consultation. And then we'll talk to them. So I think that this, this one instance is probably an aberration. I know that we did not coordinate with Water Resources as we were improving our processes, but we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to meet with Director Apodacade in the future and just kind of walk him through what we're doing. So, to make sure that no matter which department is pursuing a project, that we won't have a glitch or a gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Want to make sure, it seems like Mr. Gary, you have something that you want to say. Please go ahead, and then I'd like to come back to the board.
No, I just wanted to apologize to Supervisor Simon. Sometimes, you know, I think just seeing the process, sometimes I kind of like want everything to kind of be, and so specifically, yeah, to this, you know, to have a monitor out there, that really is it. Right? And so, you know, my apologies for, you know, kind of jumbling everything together. But in the, in the end, yeah, you know, this is going to be ongoing, you know? Levy maintenance is ongoing, you know? All of those things that are part of that space and remind you, the tribes are the ones who determine what those TCRs are, you know, not the agency. And so when we're coming to the consultation table and talking about, yeah, this waterway is our TCR, we've always used this, then that is definitely something that, because it's not tangible, it's not on paper and it's not registered, that doesn't mean that it's not significant. And so those are the things. But, you know, my apologies, like I said, I just want to make sure, you know, that, you know, when things are found, hey, we have a plan. We have a plan to make sure that, you know, how that's going to get back, it's going to get back legally and it's going to get back to where it's going to be, you know, registered with the state. So when anything else happens in the future, we don't have to worry about it, right? It'll, it'll pop up, we know that it's there. And so, my apologies.
No apology needed, and we're all, we're all learning together. Two processes that go together. One that was non-existent on our side, because that's the way it was, that's the way they wanted it to be. But now we're coming together and we're learning as we go. And my option came up from a conversation that they said they did have some funds in there for the tribal monitoring, is move from there, and all right, let's bridge this gap now and let's figure it out down the road. Eventually, we are going to do work on all of these levies, and the tribes in that area will be able to record it from now on. And then we'll have that opportunity to really say, okay, yeah, yeah, we know what's there, we've been through that project with you, we're good to go, you know? So anyway, those, that's my thoughts. I didn't try and bring up anything that would start the thing over. There was an opportunity for us to work together that was presented by Water Resources. So I think it's a positive step forward, so.
Anything further from Water Resources?
So, I would say like, based on like what we have, the information, like we tried our best. And in no way like we are trying to work otherwise, like we do want to work with the tribe, even though we were exempt for this project, we did send out letter to all the tribes, had the opportunity to consult, like talk in person, provided all the documents we had. And also being in touch with the contractor, like how he going to approach that work, even though it's these type of projects, because it will be like a five day or seven day, maybe a week or two week kind of project. So it's not like everything has been lined up like day by day or hour by hour. But we are showing a commitment where we do want to work with the tribe and like have, if we find anything, follow a process which is in place. I mean, that's, that's all I think we could have done. So, yep.
Small project, good learning, you know, for this, for you on the first one here that you've done for Lake County. So.
Yep.
You know, I think we have an opportunity to all learn a little bit, so.
Yeah. That sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Open it up for public comment. I see none coming from the chamber. We have Virginia Serenio.
Chairman, this is Tom Jordan, Scottside Energy Corporation. I thought this agenda item was I, and I put my hand up to make sure that I was there. I have no comment on what you're discussing. I think you're all on the right track.
Thank you very much. I really got your name wrong. Next, we have Kyle Bill.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate, I think the conversation is really important. I just want to echo that, you know, I think that this is really important for us as a county to really develop an internal policy or procedure that is followed. That way, when there is turnover, it's not a, it's not a process that, you know, you know, that it's outlined. Because the reality, I think, is understanding the tribe's perspective of when we are uninformed and having to do things last minute, we're not as prepared to be able to do the things that are necessary for us as tribal sovereign, sovereign entities, but also culturally when it comes to those artifacts. You know, and I think this just highlights something as simple as just having a plan. There's no opposition to what is being done, but just, just merely just wanting to be consulted on developing a plan to protect those artifacts if and when something is, you know, brought out. And so, also I think it's just, and I want to say this in a respectful way, but it's just very tone deaf, when we're being told that, you know, these agencies that have no knowledge of these areas historically are being put as the experts on what is of cultural value or not. And I think that that is not very, you know, that doesn't build relationships here locally. You know, I think that while it is, you know, there might be exemptions from law, is it a best practice? You know, that sometimes we can go above, you know, because we value the relationships, because we value each other, and especially the first inhabitants of this place, that we are experts when it comes to these areas that have been developed, will be developed, or be disrupted. And so valuing that perspective, valuing that knowledge and engaging with those knowledge keepers is not only the right thing to do, but it's, it's what we should do as community members living here together. You know, and so I think it's important that we really look at this process because it is a reoccurring theme, not just specifically with this, but as Supervisor Crandall had mentioned, there was something kind of similar. And so, at some point, when do we come up with intentional, with intentions, a plan to remedy this so that we feel heard, that we feel like people care as much? So I appreciate the discussion, I hope that it continues and that there is an opportunity to work collectively together to find a remedy that respects our ancestors, that respects our inherent sovereign right to protect and to preserve our people. And so I just want to thank everyone and encourage more, more of this and really looking into fine tuning a policy or an internal procedure. That way, anyone that comes in new understands that these are the steps that have to be taken. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and no movement in the chamber, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. I just wanted to get some clarification. At this moment in time, I know there was a proposal, and Supervisor Simon, I'm going to use your proposal, of adding monitoring, meaning that during the work being performed on the levy, that a monitor is actively there? Or are you talking about using the funds for if there is a need to contact the tribe if something is found? I understood it as monitoring is there. Is that correct?
Yeah, monitoring agreement would be, because they're going to roll out their project, they have it kind of lined out, there's going to be more specifics later when there's actually disturbance that's going on, not all of it. When they're actually bringing in and rolling, laying road base, it isn't going to do anything, you're just compacting, you're taking on a different conversation. Each one of these projects, which are kind of laid out there, when we know there's going to be ground disturbance, it can be worked out between the tribe and the contractor and Water Resources. So, the whole, they'll make the decision on all of that stuff as the project comes out and it gets ready to get started. But I kind of laid out where I thought the most important positions were going to be, the .3 miles, and it's all laid out in here, I don't know all of it, I haven't walked the project. But as the construction is getting ready to go, those will be the times, say, hey, you got to have a monitor this day. We're going to be working for four hours or six hours or eight hours on this, this portion of it. And that's, that's how it works. So that was my thought, there are some funds in there to get that started, maybe enough, may not be enough, but let's start with that and we'll go from there. So that's my thought.
Okay.
So I don't know, am I very clear on that?
I think they all agree to that.
Every project is different, but you know, that's, that's how we do.
And just a statement to that, we did state that in there, that we have a monitored agreement, that we just wanted to make sure that when ground disturbance occurred, that we just had a monitor there to protect possible inadvertent.
So I've looked at these before. So when I looked at it, it's very clear for me, I'm like, okay, because we've all been out on these, you know, to say, okay, this is how we're going to do it. So that's how I looked at it. So that, that's, the monitoring agreement will cover that, we can't control it. We're not going to go to these construction meetings. It'll be Water Resources, the contractor, and the tribe who go through that stuff unless you're called to a meeting on the project or something. It's pretty simple. For me, it's pretty simple. I apologize just putting it out there.
No, I got that, I appreciate that clarification. I just will say that I, again, same thing as I stated, we do have laws to try and respect what is accidentally found. And so, adding a cost that is not necessarily having to be borne by the department, I'm not going to agree with that at this moment in time.
There commonly is an amount that's applied to that, though. You're talking about adding more costs? Because I don't think.
No, 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 I'm talking about adding the cost of monitoring to something that is SEQA exempt that doesn't require it. Obviously, there's a cost if something is found and having to deal with inviting the tribes back in and saying, hey, with something has been found, let's talk about what to do with it, where it goes. But monitoring for something that is.
Proceeded as exempt.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the monitoring.
Okay.
It needs to happen.
We also, Supervisor Pisca and myself have been meeting with tribes and we're working on something that's going to help with this process in general and internal department types of things as well. We've identified that that's an issue, heard it loud and clear before, was glad to hear it mentioned again today. I won't go into further details, but just know that we have something that we're working on that will help with this process. So, yeah, just wanted to mention that. And I don't know if there's anything else, but go ahead.
Before you move into action, I just, I want to thank you, Robert, for spending your entire day here and having this conversation with us, because this is how we all get better. And I know that. You probably had other things to do, but this was, from my perspective, a solid investment of yours.
Yeah, I think he's got to go to the LAPEC meeting. We're like, okay. But, but yeah, a lot of what I learned is from, from Robert Gary. And I do know, I've worked with Linda as well, so I know she's privy to a lot of this. And she's, as soon as I heard she was doing this project, I've been waiting on her for quite some time, so I was like, okay. So, but here we are, here we are, we're going to be able to build on this. I don't know if I need to add anything to the motion or anything, or you mentioned it earlier.
I think we've given consensus to staff to continue to engage in consultation and decide on how the monitoring will occur, the timeline and things like that. I think there's been consensus provided by the board and they'll hash out those details.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'll go ahead and, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, approve the award bid number 25-0693 for 2024 levy Patrol Road Gravel Repair Project, Upper Lake, California, between Lake County Watershed Protection District and Coleman Construction LLC, in the amount of $163,812.64, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. With additions or with, no?
Nope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. Thank you for that conversation. And we're going to move on to our last Water Resources item, 7.7. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, consideration Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, consideration of the Watershed Protection District not using any available power of eminent domain, including the commencement of eminent domain proceedings, for the purpose of advancing the economic interests of private parties in connection with any property comprising the lease agreement between the Lake County Watershed Protection District and the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. Dr. Upadhyay.
Yeah, so the summary for this project is, so the, this property lease for the, by the Scott Valley Energy Corporation is now fully owned by the Lake County Watershed Protection District and was purchased with funding from California Department of Water Resources that expressly prohibits the use of eminent domain when purchasing properties within and for the benefit of the Middle Creek flood damage reduction and ecosystem restoration projects. Therefore, certifying that the property was not purchased with the power of eminent domain, nor will the district will use any available power of eminent domain, is not a conflict. On September 20, 2022, the Scott Valley Energy Corporation was awarded grant funding from the Economic Development Administration Indigenous Communities Program to fund the purchase of equipment for a waste woody biomass depot to process and transform forest thinning biomass from our region into saleable wood products, including biochar. This project will render strong economic and forest fire-related safety benefits to Lake County. On September 20, 2022, your board, sitting as Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, adopted Resolution 2022-DAS 116, leasing property owned by the district to Scott Valley Energy Corporation. That resolution was amended on April 23, 2024, to correct a typographical error and allow the lease to be filled with deed as required by the EDA, which has been completed. On July 1, 2024, the EDA then requested that Scott Valley Energy Corporation obtained from the district a signed certification that the district will not use any available power of eminent domain, including the commencement of eminent domain proceeding for the purpose of advancing the economic interests of private parties in connection with any property comprising the project.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding this resolution, this certificate? No questions? Seems pretty simple enough in the fact that it's required of us in order to move forward. Let's go ahead and ask, I believe we have Tom Jordan, who is with us for this item. I want to make sure that you can speak to this.
Yes, thank you very much. I am Tom Jordan. I am staff of the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, and we are the, one of the requesters of this agenda item and through the CAO's office, and it's not, another item that is solely sponsored by your board, as you've indicated in the past, to clarify for the public. The EDA grant or that we have requires several conditions to be met. One is to ensure that any funding that the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, provides to the project, as it relates to the purchase or the retention of real property, is secured and protected in such a way as that, that protects the interest of the EDA itself, and that is what your county council has explained to you. The purpose that we have before you is the site certificate certifying that your, it's a three-part certificate, your third part is that you, as the owners of Watershed Protection District, have no plans, intentions, or concerns that would, would jeopardize the position of the interests of the Economic Development Administration. Again, this is a process that the Economic Development Administration has used in all of its contracts with grantees. It is slightly, as indicated, modified here since we are not purchasing any property, but we are simply leasing a small portion of a total piece of property that is under consideration. And so we are hopeful that your board would understand that, that nuance and that difference and approve, sort of certifying that you have no intentions of pursuing eminent domain to retain that property during the tenure of the operation of the woody biomass, wood processing campus, which is located at 755 East Highway 20 in Upper Lake. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from board members? All right, let's go ahead and open up public comment. I see no movement in the chamber and no hands up in Zoom, and bringing it back to the board for action.
Is it, yeah, you know what I do? Is it possible to have this pushed back until the project is going before the planning commission, or does it have to happen now? Because I, I know that there are some meetings that need to happen still with the town hall in Upper Lake, I know with Scotts Valley. And so I just had that question for Tom. Sorry about that. I know you closed it, but...
No worries. I think it's, he's, he's the best one to answer.
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Crandall. The challenge we're facing right now is this is one of the 35 conditions that is part of the EDA grant, and without certifying that and completing the site certificate and submitting it back to EDA, we are not in any position to receive any of the funds that we've acquired to date, nor pull down future funding. So it's really a condition of dispersment of funding and not a condition of, of the process that we are going through with the planning department, a process, by the way, which has been going on for many, many months, with no indication of when the planning commission is going to hear this, this agenda item, and no indication of what the outcome of that planning commission action will be.
And so if, if hypothetically, the planning commission doesn't approve the, the permit where it's at, does it suffer the same fate as this lease? What happens to this lease situation? What happens to this eminent domain situation? Do you find some other spot, or do you lose the funding? How's that work?
If we can't, your question again is excellent. If we cannot find another spot, then yes, we would lose the funding, but the lease would have to be terminated. We'd have to request this, the county or your district to terminate that lease on the basis that the site was not approved by the planning commission, which indeed would invalidate the site certificate, all of which we'd have to start again to look at another site and come up with the same request of the site certificate. If, in the sense of that land was, was underneath the Watershed Protection District, it would come back to your, your board for action at that time.
All right, thanks.
So I don't have any issues with moving forward with this, and I do hope that whatever happens at the planning commission, you're able to find some way, shape, or form to be able to move forward with this project. It has been a long time coming, but I do, it's the last part of the memo here that says the EDA then requested SVEC obtain from the district a signed certificate or certification that the district will not use any available power of eminent domain for the purpose of advancing the economic interests of private parties in connection with any property comprising the project. Well, the project is obviously what we're talking about, the biochar, the biomass facility. I guess I, I need to ask, when it's close to the Middle Creek Restoration Project, we do have some potential conversations about utilizing eminent domain. We haven't started that process, but it has nothing to do with this project. I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally say we're not going to do something, that we may utilize the power, but it has nothing to, I just, it's the one thing that's in my mind that, that I am concerned about. I don't think there's a conjunction or, or a connection, but I just want to make sure and put it out there that there is conversation at the Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting about eventually starting to look at that process, because we do have some unwilling sellers, and we're not able to utilize, as it states in the memo, any of the funds provided to us from the state for unwilling sellers. So anyway, I just want to put it out there and see if that has the potential to be a problem and be the reverse of what we're telling the EDA if we say yes to this letter today.
So based on like what I have looked so far, like as my understanding is, so whatever funds we have received from the California Department of Water Resources, we are not allowed to use like power of eminent domain if we are using that funds to acquire that property. But this specific property has already, already been acquired from that fund, which we didn't use the eminent domain, which is required by that fund. And now the district owns that land, and a portion of that, like which is probably not falling, I've not looked into that, but it's kind of my assumption saying it probably is not under, it not going to go underwater, like if we are leasing it out, it should be a higher ground or something. And what this memo says is like we are waving, like a district is waving their right to, to not take it back within that lease period. So suppose, because there, there would be like an investment from their side.
Yeah. And I do remember on the map that their facility area was definitely outside of the flood zone. They put it a little bit north from the southernmost tip, and I believe within the map of the Middle Creek Restoration Project itself, it's just that southern piece of that property. So I think that's already been dealt with. I, I'm willing to move forward. I don't think it will be a problem.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yes, I think council has explained it correctly. Simply put, the site certificate that you're certifying, that we're asking to be certified, only pertains to that, that portion or that area that is currently owned and under, under the control of the Watershed Protection District. That's why it's a three-part site certificate. The first identifies what the site is, the second confirms that there's no title issues pertaining to the site, and the third is your action as owners to say, yes, you will not, have no intentions or plans to use eminent domain to remove anything that's on that site that you, that you've established on your property. So it only pertains to that particular portion or that property that you currently own, as county council has explained.
Okay. Well, again, I'm willing to move forward. I'm still confused how we would do eminent domain on ourselves for something we already own, but that's just me speaking out loud. Any other further comment from board members? Let's open it up for public comment. I see no hands up in the Zoom room, no movement in the chamber, and let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District, Board of Directors certify that the Watershed Protection District will not use any available power of eminent domain, including the commencement of eminent domain proceedings, for the purpose of advancing the economic interests of private parties in connection with any property comprising the lease agreement between the Lake County Watershed Protection District and the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, and authorize the chair to sign. Did I miss something?
And just for further clarification, that would be, the, the signature would be on part three of the document titled Owner Certification Regarding Eminent Domain.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, let me make sure here. I believe 5.9 is our last item, other than calendars. Director March, thank you for your patience. 5.9. Approve two rental agreements for hangar space at Lamson Field Airport with Mr. Kevin Soto, and authorize the chair to execute the agreements. I pulled this item for further discussion. My, my, my concern, and granted with the 510, I feel like I'm only contradicting what we said in 510 while we're looking at a reduction. Here, I'm concerned that I'm not looking to make money. That's not what we're supposed to be doing here. But I know if I go rent a, a storage space, it can get quite costly on a monthly basis, and here we're looking at a $300 storage space for an airplane, let alone boxes and materials that you would typically see in a storage space. What I don't have is what is the depreciation of the building, as in what's actually our costs of having this building and doing maintenance on the building, and are we actually able to keep up with ensuring that that building will still exist in the future versus what seems like a really nice rental agreement for somebody who's renting an airplane hangar?
So I can't comment on the depreciation. My engineering degree doesn't allow me to.
And maybe that's the wrong term that I'm utilizing. I apologize.
Just considering the age and the condition of the buildings, I think the rent is reasonable. And the $300 rent is simply a, a metal roof over a concrete pad. So that's not a hangar.
It's missing a fourth wall.
It's missing two walls, so. But I, based on the, based on the condition of the buildings, I think the rates are reasonable. I don't know that additional information could shed any more light on it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for your response. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Supervisor Green?
Just in terms of the contract as it's written, both contracts reference a large metal storage hangar and breezeway. How do you distinguish between the $300 rental and the $500 rental?
The $300 rental has two walls, and the $500 rental has four walls.
I guess I don't see...
Yeah, I know.
The APN, I don't see a street address, so...
Correct.
There's nothing in the contract itself that tells me that, so...
Correct.
Absent any specificity in this, how do you distinguish between it? Doesn't even say...
I had the same issue. They're on county property and, and...
The hangers aren't numbered or anything?
No, they're just two adjacent facilities. The agreement was signed in, in May of last year, so I think I decided not to go back and rework the agreements.
And so I thought they were 10-year agreements.
I don't, I don't have that information in front of me right now. I apologize. But I think they're 10-year agreements with a 45-day cancellation provision, if I recall correctly.
Because right here, what I see is May 1, 2023. You're saying this was signed last year, which would be 2023, and if it says term rental of property shall be for 10 years, is that new? Or is that the same as it was last year, and this has already been approved for 10 years?
It has, it has only been signed by the renter.
That airplane go by, man, a couple times. Trying to have my phone on me.
What is it?
Is it B?
I guess there's fires.
Yeah, I heard the airplane go by twice. One was just a second ago.
Yeah, Harbor Fire. We're going to take a brief break.
Five-minute break and figure out what's going on, yeah?
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it go by twice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Please, sorry. All right, welcome back. Sorry about that. We had a little bit of an emergency situation trying to figure out what's going on outside. We're going to go back to where we were, which is item 5.9. Nice. And thank you again for the response, Director March. There's no further questions from board members. I think we did all that, so let's open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand or stand up to the microphone. Looks like Mr. Carter will not be speaking on this item. There's no hands up, so bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
So in light of the issue that was brought up regarding the address, your board may consider incorporating just the address of the location itself where the rent, rental agreement will take place. And that address really is 600 Sky Park Drive, Lakeport, California, which is Lamson Field. And we can incorporate that in each agreement on the very first paragraph, right after the word rental property. So it would read for each of these rental agreements. This rental agreement is made this day on such and such a date between County of Lake, Department of Public Works and Kevin Soto for the rental property located at 600 Sky Park Drive, Lakeport, California, 95453. And the rest would be, rest of the language would stay the same. So for, for purposes of the approval, if your board is willing to go to that, in that direction, it is, it would be to approve the, both rental agreements as amended.
Okay. And real quick, is it possible, do we need to make an amendment? Because right now it says May 1st, 2023 for 10 years to May 1st, 2033. If we're approving this today, should we update those dates to be from 9/1/2024 to 9/8/30 or 9/1/2034?
That would be up to the parties who have negotiated this agreement, what their intent is. If it is to be applied retroactively.
Okay, so keep the dates the same?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to check in and make sure that that was correct.
All right.
Looking for action from the board.
There's not in further, Chair, I move that the board approve the two rental agreements as amended, using language from county council for a hangar space at Lamson Field Airport with Mr. Kevin Soto and authorize the chair to execute the agreements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. And our last item that is on our agenda is our weekly calendars. We are going to forego that today, just so we can make sure and check in with families and friends in our communities. Thank you.